Good to go. Fantastic and good morning. I'm going to call this meeting of the Arizona State Board of Education to order at 9:02. Normally, I would ask Executive Director Ross to take role, but Executive Director Ross is currently in a meeting up on the ninth floor, but we're lucky to have Deputy Director DePlante here. So if you would, Bruce, could you take role for us?
Thank you, President Cor. Yes. President Cor?
Present.
Member Haley?
Here.
Superintendent Horn will be joining us late. He's speaking at the Black Mothers' Forum. A member Cantonese?
Here.
Member Clark?
Here.
Dr. Clay?
Here.
Dr. Hagerman?
Present.
A member Kravikas? A member Meyerson? And Dr. Cruz Rivera will be absent from this meeting today. You have Quorm.
Okay, very good. Then I will move us on to item number one, which is the presentation of candidates in election of the State Board of Education officers for this year 2025. Deputy Director DePlante, you want to walk us through this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Cor. Item one on today's agenda is the presentation of candidates and the election of the State Board officers for 2025. Earlier this morning, the State Board Nominating Committee met to prepare a slate of candidates for consideration. I want to thank Dr. Cor, Dr. Clay, and Member Cantonese for serving on the nominating committee. The slate prepared by the nominating committee nominates Member Haley for president and Dr. Hagerman for vice president. Members, you may also nominate individuals for these positions from the floor. Do any members have any recommendations for board leadership positions at this time? Hearing none, we will move to voting. For members who are in person, you have a paper ballot in front of you, while members who are with us virtually have been sent a virtual ballot via Google Form. Both the paper and the virtual ballots allow for members to enter other members for both of these positions if members so choose. Please take a moment to complete your ballot, please sign your ballot, and raise your hand when your ballot is complete. At that time, Shannon from our team will come and collect the ballots to be tallied. Members, having reviewed the ballots, the board's leadership for 2025 will be Member Haley as president and Dr. Hagerman as vice president. President Haley, I will turn the meeting over to you for your president's report.
I always wanted a gavel.
This will be very confusing. People will say Dr. Cor or President Cor, and I'll have to look it in. I guess for the president's report, first, I just want to say thank you so much to Dr. Cor for your leadership. You joined the board over eight years ago, and immediately you were thrown into leadership. I believe you served as vice president for about four and a half, or four years in the balance as president. And I think all of us, I speak on behalf of the board, how grateful you are for, or we are, for your leadership, for your grace, your kindness, your wit, and the way you have led really efficient meetings and relied on your colleagues for their expertise. So, thank you so much. And I have very big shoes to fill, so I hope everyone has lots of grace for Dr. Hagerman and I as we assume new roles and responsibilities on the board. With that, I think that's, from my perspective, that's it. Really grateful, as always, to the incredible State Board team. You do a fantastic job in preparing each of us for our meetings and giving us the relevant information that we need in order to address the content that is before us today. Many of us, we, I just want to commend board members a couple weeks ago, or a week and a half ago, when we had to have an emergency meeting on behalf of the Isaac School District. And just want to thank all the members for their hard work and the questions that they asked and how quickly they engaged. We are very, very committed to serving students across the state, and that is always at the forefront of our attention. So, again, thanks again to all the staff and to my colleagues for stepping up very quickly for that. So with that, I hand it back to you for Bruce, for Deputy Director DePlante, for the executive director's report.
Thank you, President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, and members. We'll have two pieces on the executive director's report. The first one will be the Students of the Month, and so we'll start there. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce Ismael Cuevas, who's an 11th grade student at Wilcox High School in Cochise Technology District. He's nominated by his CTEed Administrator Troy, I'm going to mess this up, I'm sorry, Tigerson. He is an outstanding CTE leader in the high school and community. He's a crew leader for the Advanced Carpentry and Construction Class and Model Skills for classmates. He currently is building greenhouses for the community. Member of Skills USA and has placed at state competition. He serves as a Spanish translator and peer math tutor. He's a teaching assistant for middle school CTE students taking carpentry for the first time. He has achieved football All-Conference Defensive Player of the Year and All-State Linebacker. And he works during the school year and summer. He interns at a local garage and is working on earning his commercial driver's license through Southwest, or SW Trucking Driver Training. So, let me present to you Ismael Cuevas.
Good morning. I'm Ismael Cuevas. I'm a junior at Wilcox High School. Yeah, Wilcox High School, you know, has, very grateful to be a part of Wilcox High School. Really welcoming staff and very helpful with everything. I want to thank my parents and Coach Lottz for, like, everything they helped me with. I'm planning on getting my CDL through Southwest Trucking down in Tucson, and want to start driving right after high school. Yep. And part of the football team. I got Defensive Player of the Year for Region this year, and then I got an All-State Award for linebacker as well. And, yeah. Thanks for having me. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mika Alteringer. She's a 10th grade student at Mingus Union High School. She was nominated by Chief Science Officer Program Manager Ashton Grove. She's serving her fourth year as Chief Science Officer impacting the program at An Cottonwood Community. She's a member of the Chief Science Officer AZ Leadership Council. She's passionate about STEM education and awareness. She's described as thoughtful, intentional, and collaborative. She's committed to bringing gaps in STEM education and shaping and empowering the next generation of STEM leaders. Mika?
Good morning. It's an honor to be here today. My name is Michael Alteringer, and I am a sophomore at Mingus Union High School in Cottonwood, Arizona. Mingus serves students from multiple small towns in the Verde Valley. It has about 1,200 students. My favorite part about Mingus is the sense of community. At first, it felt very big, but now I know almost everyone in my grade and lots of students in other grades, too. I get to know other students through sports, clubs, and my classes. At Mingus, I'm on the cross-country soccer and track teams. For clubs, I'm a part of Mingus's captains club, steam club, and in-act club, and later this year, I hope to be inducted into National Honor Society. Another activity that I participate in is the Chief Science Officer, or CSO, program. I was nominated to be here today by Ashton Grove, who works for the SciTech Institute and runs the CSO program. CSO started in Phoenix and has since spread its outreach throughout the US and even internationally. CSOs are students in grades six through 12 who serve as STEM ambassadors in their communities. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. I'm a fourth-year CSO at the Science Vortex, a nonprofit children's science center in the Verde Valley. Every CSO is required to do a STEM-themed action plan that positively impacts their community. As a CSO, I've been able to give back to my community in many ways, such as starting a Kids Night Out program at the Science Vortex, helping host free STEM events, giving STEM demonstrations to students, and leading field trip activities for students at the Science Vortex. I am now on both the CSO Arizona Leadership Council and CSO International Leadership Council. This year, I am on a team that is helping start a CSO program in Yaslo, Poland. I'm really excited because I've never been there, and it'll be an amazing experience. A big part about the CSO program is giving students a voice. When I entered the program, I was really shy, but leaders in the program encouraged me to step out of my comfort zone, and as a result, I learned to be a leader. In the program, I've had so many incredible opportunities, such as attending STEM conferences in Florida, Michigan, and Arizona, working with inspiring mentors, including other student CSOs, and making lifelong friends. Without the CSO program, I would not be here with you today, and I probably wouldn't have plans to pursue a career in STEM. When I graduate Mingus in 2027, I plan to go to a four-year university where I hope to study biomedical sciences and run Division One cross-country and track. I also plan to be a part of the CSO alumni program so I can have an impact on future CSOs. Thank you for inviting me today and for your service to Arizona students and schools.
I'm sorry, Mika, for messing up your name, but congratulations to the both of you. The second item on the executive director's report is to honor the request of Member Cantonese to have the floor.
Thank you. Good morning, fellow State Board of Education members and guests. Today, I come before you not just as a member of this board, but as a proud educator of the resilient and loving community of the Isaac School District. This morning, I witnessed something that no educator should ever have to see. Students and staff in tears, worried about their futures, their schools, their stability. The Isaac School District is a strong community full of hardworking, humble, and loving families. This district is full of the best people that I know, kids that are going to change the world. Despite everything, the uncertainty of our schools staying open and being paid, our staff is showing up, pouring their hearts into their work, refusing to give up on our kids, and our families, humble, strong, and resilient, are holding on to hope. But this is a crisis unlike anything we've ever seen in our state's history. But the truth is that we cannot do this alone to keep the district open. We need your help. We need the legislator to act today to save Isaac schools. The 5,000 families and students, the 650 staff who call our district home did nothing wrong. They deserve stability, respect, and a future filled with opportunities. The last thing these children need is to wonder if their school doors will be open tomorrow. I want to express my deep gratitude to everyone who has stepped in to help during this time of crisis. Governor Hobbs and her staff, Senator Bravo, Representatives Cruz and Aguilar in the Democratic Caucus, Representative Gress in the Republican Caucus, the members of the State Board of Education and the staff, Marisol Garcia in the Arizona Education Association, Superintendent Horn and the ADE staff, and every single person working behind the scenes to find solutions, because we can only do this together. But this is an all-hands-on-deck moment, and the decision to pass the necessary measures is in the legislator's hands. The families of the Isaac School District are counting on you, the legislator. The students are counting on you. Today, we have the opportunity to not just save schools, but demonstrate what it means to come together as leaders and a community in the face of adversity. Let's rise to the occasion. Let's, let us ensure that the children of Isaac schools continue to have a place to learn, to dream, and to thrive. Together, we can make this happen, but please, anyone in the legislature today, please save Isaac schools. This community is counting on you. Thank you.
President Haley, that concludes the executive director's report.
Thank you so much, Deputy Director DePlante. The next is going to be the call to public. This is a time for the public to comment on items not on today's agenda or on the consent portion of the agenda. Today, all speakers will be limited to two minutes. And Deputy Director DePlante, do we have any requests to speak?
President Haley and members, we do. First up will be Marisol Garcia, followed by Mohit Jain or Hui.
Thank you. Members of the board and community, my name is Marisol Garcia. I, too, am an Isaac School District teacher, eighth grade. I'm also currently the president of the Arizona Education Association. I come here, it's hard to follow up Member Cantonese, but I'm here for two reasons. One, just out of gratitude. I'm not sure if the superintendent is online, but also to Chief of Staff, gratitude for him championing what is happening in our community. A community that if you went up to the ninth floor and looked out, you can see. That close, you could walk there. And a community that welcomed me, my son, my family, when we moved to Arizona, knowing no one, and welcomed us, and has been there since he, and was there since he, till he graduated high school and moved away for college. This is a community and family that is strong and resilient, and even during COVID, made sure that every single student and every single parent and community member was safe during some pretty scary times at the beginning of uncertainty. So, thank you for your determination to pull everyone together. We have not stopped working for two weeks to, since you all made the decision to start pulling every level, every level of government to make sure that we save. That's what government was created for, is to come together when things were going to hurt innocent folks. I know we ground ourselves in how important it is for the 5,000 students in Isaac, but I also am here to plead for the 650 educators who have committed their lives to this school district and these students, who right now are afraid whether or not they will have a place to work on Wednesday, bills to pay, healthcare concerns, chemotherapy appointments. Just start imagining how crazy this could be. So, I, too, like Member Cantonese, am here to implore you to use any level of power, any sort of relationship you have, to push this through the legislature today, through our Hail Mary Plan, but secondarily, to make sure that you're talking to everyone we can, because we need to save Isaac schools. Thank you.
Next up is Mohit Jain.
Thank you, respected president, superintendent, and the board members. I'm standing today in front of you as an Arizona resident and a father of an extraordinary child. I'm here to express my deep concerns regarding the recent cessation of the Arizona Department of Education English Tutoring Fund. This fund has played a very critical role in, for my son to receive specialized tutoring for, from the Sylvan Education Center, addressing his English, specific English comprehension challenges. My son has autism spectrum disorder, which affects his ability to process, comprehend, and revert an English language and any language whatsoever. He's a very extraordinary child academically, who has, who does grade in his grades for different subjects. However, because of his challenges due to his ASD, he is not able to comprehend the language and perform well in tests and exams. And as an eighth grader, he, we have been told by his teachers that he, basically, his English comprehension is equal to a fifth grader. And even though he is doing really well in other areas, his educational progress is severely interrupted. And over the past year, the English Tutoring Fund has really helped him in, to significantly improve his academic performance and help him overcome many obstacles. And however, the funding cut this year, he's no longer receiving the educational support. And the sudden disruption in services really puts his academic progress at serious risk. The support that he received last year not only addressed his immediate learning gaps, but also helped him build his confidence and self-esteem as a student. I respectfully request the Board of Education to reconsider this decision and restate the funding for English Tutoring Fund, not just for him, but for other kids in the same situation as well. Thank you so much.
President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, and members, that concludes this call to the public.
Okay, moving along. The next is the consent agenda. We'll now move to item four of the consent agenda. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull and discuss? Okay, so in that case, do I have a motion to approve items 4A through 4G?
So moved.
Member Clark?
I second.
Dr. Cor, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving to the item number five. We now move to item five, and this is another call to the public. This is a time for the public to comment on items on today's general session. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. Deputy Director DePlante, do we have any requests to speak?
President Haley, yes, we do. First up will be Nicole Marquez, followed by Scott Turner, followed by Shelby Young. Nicole? Not seeing Nicole, Scott Turner?
Okay. President Haley, members of the board, my name is Scott Turner, CEO of Healthy Future U.S. I'm here to address the K-12 rearrangement of deck chairs on the Titanic, commonly referred to as reforming the state A-to-F system. Consider the nation's report card eighth-grade test scores over the last several decades. As we ramped up accountability, reading scores in the US and Arizona barely increased. Throughout that time, as we obsessed with reading and math scores, we slashed physical health and arts education and recess in school counselors to a small fraction of recommended levels and reallocated those precious hours and resources to tested subjects. Adolescent prediabetes increased from almost nothing to one in three teens today, with high prevalence across all incomes and ethnicities, and teen mental health worsened dramatically. We led advocacy in 2016-17 with the A through F Committee of this board, resulting in a unanimous board resolution on April 24, 2017, of the need for articulation of a defined process to address arts, PE, and health. But PE teachers didn't want their few remaining minutes per week with students to be used up for a bloated state assessment process. I hope while we are tweaking weighting percentages, that we in parallel start thinking much more deeply, broadly and deeply about the purpose of our K-12 system and how that should drive our accountability system rather than narrow accountability continuing to dangerously narrow our education. We need more soul-searching to guide our rulemaking. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Next up is Shelby Young, followed by Georgina Mansalvo.
Hello. Good morning, members of the board. Thank you for having me. I'm here today to share a testimony on behalf of a parent, Yanalise Alvarez, whose daughter is a fifth-grade English language learner in the Mesa School District. Yanalise is unable to be here because she has to work, so. I am incredibly thankful for the different dual-language immersion models. I understand the importance of research-based methods that give my child the best chance to succeed academically and socially. I've witnessed my daughter's transformation since transitioning from structured English immersion programs to the 50/50 model while also maintaining her native language, which is a vital part of her identity and her culture. With the growing number of ELL students here in Arizona, it is more important than ever to continue supporting programs that, continue to support programs that ensure their success. All parents, regardless of their background or zip code, deserve a say in their child's education. Let's empower all parents to make choices that benefit their children and keep supporting the approved ELL models. Thank you so much for your time.
Next up is Georgina Mansalvo, followed by online Brandy Blackford. Georgina? Not seeing Georgina here. We'll go to Brandy Blackford online, followed by Crystal McKinley.
Good morning, President Haley, Dr. Hagerman, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Firstly, I want to thank everyone who helped clear the backlog of orders in ESA. Knowing that things are being approved and reimbursed or ordered is a huge relief, not only for myself, but for all of the parents. Secondly, the wait time at the call center has decreased, and now we don't have to block out an entire day to get a question answered. I truly am thankful for all the changes to make things more efficient. And yes, there's always a but. But can we now please focus your time and effort into creating a searchable database for allowed items? Please work on consistent training for all employees so that they are allowing the same things and disallowing the same things. And please, publish information on exactly what risk-based auditing is, so that people unfamiliar with the term can make decisions from a place of knowledge and not fear. You have done so much for us in the past month, and we are so incredibly thankful. Please continue the good and helpful work. Thank you so much. Please continue the good and helpful work. Thank you so much.
Next up is Crystal McKinley, followed by Maria Ladas. Crystal, if you'd unmute and show your camera?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was under the impression I had three minutes, so I'm going to do this as fast as possible. So I submitted a pre-written statement that preamps this. So but as a summary of my written public statement is that parents are being painted in the image that a majority of us enrolled in the ESA program are attempting to abuse the program's funding. And I just want to say it's a false narrative. The truth is supported by the hundreds of thousands of verified approvals versus the tiny fraction of examples of abuse that are being used to make the claim. We're just trying to jump through the hoops that we're given to use our funds. It's becoming more and more evident to us in the program that those in charge of the program are intentionally making it difficult for parents to use the funds that we just give up. Internal rules and procedures are being made as the Department of Education's ESET team feels and zero communication of the new rules and procedures are being communicated to the parents. It's a handbook states that it's supposed to be. We're not being notified about changes on subject spending limits, as an example, until after we're making purchases and are being rejected. We're not being formally denied but rejected, which is a different status under the law, and it keeps us from our legal obligation to be able to appeal because it's not an official denial. And I stated in my written statement, it's a loophole that's being used by ADE to deny us our due process. And it's a violation of the Constitution of Arizona, the state law, and the contract that we entered into. They're being based, these rejections are being based off of ADE staff's arbitrary opinion of what is reasonable without any written notification of what that may be. We're being rejected for unwritten, unknown, and unfounded bias of opinions by those in charge of the ESA program, and they're not being given the opportunity to appeal so that may prove to you, SBE, that our purchases are justified educational purchases. And it was even brought up by Miss Member Clark to Mr. Ward in the December meeting that she didn't believe that the spending limits were acceptable because they're not written by legislature. We have constantly changing and visible arbitrary rules and procedures that our parents are being put into that's causing us extreme hardship financially, and we're being forced to choose between purchasing for our children's education.
Excuse me, Ms. McKinley?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your remarks. We appreciate them.
Next up is Maria Ladas, followed by Simone Bell. Maria?
Good morning, Dr. Core, Superintendent Horn, if he's online, members of the board and the Arizona community. I'm Maria Cristina Ladas. I'm an independent national-level consultant with my home base in Arizona, where I manage the Arizona Dual Language Immersion Network. Today, I wanted to share the results of one of the states that I work with regarding English learners in dual-language programs because I saw that you will be reviewing the annual report for Arizona English learners. One of the states I consult with is the Delaware Department of Education, their Dual Language Immersion Initiative, which began 20 years ago as a response to business headquarters moving out of Delaware despite the tax benefits because the CEOs expressed the need to have an access to a more multilingual workforce. Today, one in five kindergartners in Delaware participate in a dual-language program in a 50/50 model. Spanish, Mandarin, or Greek are the languages they offer. And these follow a very specific model that uses program assurances to guide accurate implementation. We all know from experience what happens when programs are left to implement without having a set of guardrails, which is what we're seeing here in Arizona. We're seeing a wide range of how 50, the 50/50 dual-language model is interpreted and implemented in our state. And the resulting data that I just want to caution should be probably not used to make blanket statements about the model. What I can say here in Delaware, students take the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, which is their state-level achievement assessment. And while currently the ELs in the dual-language program here, they might not initially outscore their non-dual-language peers, but they do start to show a higher trajectory than their non-DLI English learner peers as they go into reclassified monitoring and later their fully exited status. This is because well-implemented 50/50 dual-language programs need to start in the lower grades and understanding that becoming bilingual and belligerent is a longer process than the one-year timeframe often recommended by SEI. One other study I just wanted to highlight is from the independent RAN study, used 10 years of Portland public school data that showed that higher reclassification rates for English learners in DLI programs.
Excuse me, Ms. Ladas? Your two minutes is up, and we really appreciate your comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up is Simone Bell, followed by James Francis, and concludes with Erin Tamayo.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, esteemed members of the Board of Education. I want to begin by expressing our sincere appreciation for your recent improvements to the ESA reimbursement and order approval processes. These changes have significantly reduced processing delays and have helped families access educational resources more efficiently. However, I would like to address two areas where we see opportunities for further enhancement. Our primary concern is the need for a searchable database that clearly outlines spending limits for educational purposes. This would help parents make informed, compliant purchasing decisions from the outset. Based on extensive feedback from ESA families and staff, we recommend implementing the following specific guidelines. For example, musical instruments. Beginner instruments up to a set dollar amount. Intermediate instruments up to a set dollar amount. Advanced instruments, special approval process with documented skill level requirements. For example, athletic equipment. Set an individual item limit, a set dollar amount per baseball gear per season. An annual category maximum up to a certain dollar amount per year. For example, educational furniture. Be very specific in dimension limits. For example, a bookcase cannot exceed 30 square feet. Our second concern involves the current terminology used for size restrictions. Terms such as large and small create unnecessary ambiguity. We request more precise specification to help parents confidently make an appropriate purchase within program guidelines. These changes would significantly improve the ESA program's efficiency and reduce confusion for all stakeholders. Thank you for considering these suggestions and for your continued dedication to supporting our educational community. Thank you for your time.
Next up is James Francis, followed by Erin Tamayo. James?
Good morning, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board. My name is Dr. James Francis from Amerischools Academy, and I am speaking here on behalf of Amerischools Academy Yuma South, but also on behalf of several schools who were adversely affected by the known issue with the accountability calculations. I've also submitted a detailed written comment containing my full concern since two minutes is not always enough. Amerischools Academy Yuma South and a handful of other schools had their appeals recommended for denial by the A through F Appeals Committee on the basis of school letter grade calculation formula. The problem is that members of ADE, members of the Accountability Technical Advisory Committee, and members of this board have all acknowledged that there is a formula issue that is that causes small schools and schools with non-traditional grade structures to have at the minimum a three times more difficulty in earning an A rating from their larger and more traditional counterparts. As a result, schools were adversely affected, were denied their appeal, thereby denying the opportunity to address any disproportionate discrepancy for favor of sticking to, quote, "how it's always been done." Schools like Amerischools were only 1.69 points away from the next letter grade, which boils down to the performance of one student or a fraction of a student. In fact, one school was less than several hundredths of a single point away from a higher letter grade and was recommended denied solely on the basis that the A through F Appeals Committee was not the place to make the argument, but had to be adjusted in the accountability committees. But in the meantime, while schools work with the talented, dedicated, and extremely hard-working individuals at the accountability committees to address the formula discrepancy, these schools will be left to languish and suffer the penalties incurred by the letter grades bestowed by this formula. This is untenable and damages the morale of those schools. Small schools deserve every right to perform at the same rate as their larger, quote, "more traditional counterparts" and should not be punished and penalized while waiting for this egregious error to be resolved. The board has the authority, the right, and the last and final opportunity to provide a lifeline to these schools that will otherwise suffer the action and the final decision of an oppressive system that's known to have major flaws. I sincerely hope the committee will have the readiness to take action on behalf and serve to protect all schools under their discretion, small or large. Thank you.
And next up is Erin Tamayo. Erin?
Good morning, board. Good morning, superintendent. My name is Reverend Erin Tamayo. I am a local faith leader and an educator of English language learners as well as a global teacher trainer. And most importantly, I'm a mother of two boys enrolled in dual-language classrooms here in Arizona. I'm also a prior educator of Isaac School District. As an educator, I've witnessed the transformative power of bilingualism. Learning and preserving a child's home language connects them to the stories and wisdom of their grandparents, their aunts, their uncles, and their ancestors. It roots them in their identity, grounding them in their culture, while fostering a deep sense of belonging. At the same time, I recognize the importance of mastering academic English. English is often the shared language in a globalized world, enabling our children to excel in U.S. society, exchange ideas, and contribute innovations on an international scale in a globalized world. Unfortunately, Arizona's current English-only law does not align with the goal of cultivating leaders for tomorrow. Research shows that additive language models, where a child's home language is seen as a resource rather than a barrier, lead to better outcomes for all of our students. These models allow children to build on their existing linguistic knowledge, knowing their home language as a bridge and mastering English and expanding their academic understanding. But conversely, these subtractive models like structured English immersion disadvantage our English language learners by forcing them to acquire English before they can fully engage in other academic content. These methods not only hinder language, but also devalue a child's home language and cultural identity. As a parent, I take great pride in my children's bilingual education. They're learning to communicate in two languages, and I know this skill will open countless doors for them in the future. I know this because I myself am bilingual. Bilingual professionals are in high demand, and bilingualism is increasingly recognized as an asset, a source of strength and connection. As a mother, as an educator, as a faith leader, I urge you to support research-based inclusive models that were passed by the legislature and approved by this board.
If you could wrap up your remarks?
Let's continue to champion our English language learners and build our educational system that celebrates diversity. Thank you.
President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, members, that concludes this call to the public.
Great, thank you so much. We're now going to be moving on to the general session. First will be item 6A. This is informational only. And Deputy Director DePlante, do we have our first presenter?
President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, members, we do. Here to speak about the next Education Workforce Strategic School Staffing and Educator Preparation Program is the dean of Mary Lou Fulton Teachers College at Arizona State University, Dr. Carol Bazil.
Good morning. Happy New Year, all. This feels like, just coming back, some of you know about this work. This feels like a little bit of an update. Some of you don't know about this work, but thank you very much for the invitation and congratulations, President Haley, and thank you for all of your hard work, Dr. Core. Much appreciated. We have at ASU now for a number of years been walking down this path, thinking about the next education workforce. It's funny, in 2017, I just came across a picture that my husband took at Mayo Hospital. In that picture, in the emergency room at Mayo, I happened to have the flu, feeling crummy, but looked up on the wall. There is a picture that shows like all these different people in different colored scrubs, and it says, "Who's in my room?" And I said to my husband, "You have to take a picture of that because we have to start thinking about what this workforce looks like in education and the variety of people that we need and who we need and how do we, how do we start to think about that?" Next slide. I don't know who's running slides here. Thank you. So this is something that we then have been working on and thinking about, this whole idea of the education workforce. And today, this seems really very important as we think about the big W workforce, how we're trying to get kids to the larger workforce. But the question then becomes, who are the educators? And we talk about recruitment and retention of educators, but we really aren't talking more broadly about who's in this workforce, what they do, how they work together, and how we begin to think about how they can prepare kids for the next education workforce. At graduation every year, I say to our audience that, you know, I love lawyers and engineers and doctors and accountants and historians and all of that. But none of them, none of the 20,000 graduates every year at ASU would be there without educators. But today, we need to think about who those educators are. Next slide. So this is what we all know. We lose 16% of our workforce. Somebody gave me a number the other day. 55,000 teachers over the past six years have actually left. So is it a teacher shortage, or are we actually sitting with a lot of certified teachers that are choosing not to be educators today? Only 37% of parents would actually encourage their child to be a teacher. And the job is untenable. We have seen over a 30% decline in educator preparation graduates nationally, including here. We are grateful for the Arizona Teachers Academy, actually, that is keeping our numbers fairly steady. The conversation continues to be about recruitment and retention, and those conversations really are not getting us to the kinds of solutions that we think we need to get to to actually think about this workforce in a different way. And the education workforce is no longer addressing the needs of the bigger workforce to address the goal of what I think is economic and social mobility, which is at the heart of what we're trying to get to. Next slide. So what if teacher shortage, student engagement, all of the things that we have been talking about, including special education, all of the things that we want to try to think about here is not actually a recruitment-retention problem? What if it is a workforce design problem? Next slide. So we have said this, and we've said this now for the last probably five or six years, that we want to provide all students with deeper and personalized learning by building teams of educators with distributed expertise and empower educators by developing better ways to enter the profession, specialize, and advance. Next slide. So good for kids and good for teachers. Today's workforce, we see as the current one-teacher, one-classroom staffing structure that creates a daily crisis. That if a child is in crisis, a teacher has to deal with that crisis and the rest of the learning stops. There are all kinds of things that happen in terms of inflexibility of teachers. Teachers need to be off for a day. We bring in a substitute that is usually not good learning for kids or for the educator. The role of a teacher is monolithic. Teacher preparation programs prepare teachers to be the same to all kids at all times. That, that whole process looks very, very much the same, and we talk about this idea of widget teachers. And I believe we're leaving tons of talent on the table, that there are people out there that have a lot of talent that could be bringing to schools if we could think about certification differently, if we could think about layers and levels of who educators are in a different way. It is also very hard to make instruction learners centered in a one-teacher, one-classroom model. And educators cannot be all things to all people at all times. Welcome, Superintendent Horn. So this is where we begin this conversation and really looking at today's educator workforce, how they work, how we think about them, how we certify them, and then how do we think about this in a different way? This is what we think we need today, and this is where we have started to go at ASU, which is to say, look, how can we get to a more responsive educator workforce based on need and context? That when we take 100 kids and we say, here's your 25, and your 25, and your 25, and good luck. And we hope that that one teacher can be everything to all of those children. That is, that is just, it's an untenable job today. We need a broader set of educators who can work in teams with distributed expertise. The rest of us all work in organizations with teams, and we distribute expertise. And schools do not do that. We're counting on every single teacher. We need a broader set of credentials, varying levels and sizes. Educators who can model the workforce, how people work in teams, how they lead teams, how they talk to kids about what that begins to look like and how to model the durable skills that we think that every student needs to get to the big W workforce. Educators who can address the challenges that learners have today, and we need leadership and advancement opportunities. My son went to work for Amazon, and in six months, they said, so what do you want to do next? They are very, very clear about this generation of kids coming into the workforce and what they want and what they need and how they want to advance, and we don't have that in education, and we are going to need to do that. Next slide. So there are lots of ways, lots of things that we're beginning to think about in terms of who is in this workforce. Who's in the community? Who can help? How do we start thinking about people who are adjuncts that bring specialized skills? How do we rethink the role of special educator? How do we start to think about our students who are freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors, who we are now encouraging to go into paraprofessional roles? We're working with districts to try to hire them to think about how they can advance even pre-professionally, pre-back... to, to think about how they can advance even pre-professionally, pre-bac, as a pre-baccalaureate. We're creating those job descriptions for them so they also can advance and also be paid and, and have advancement in pay through the four years there in college. They all need to work. They can no longer do this thing called student teaching and internships for free. It is not equitable. It's not fair. We have to change that process. We also created something called the Community Educator Learning Hub, Community Educator Learning Hub with Esser Money. Thank you to the department. Has now, we have 9,000 people who are using that. These are people who are working in schools as tutors, volunteers, parents, right, who we saw during COVID, you know, really didn't know how to teach their child to begin, even begin to think about how to decode words. So all of these things are beginning to happen. We're looking at leadership differently. And so, and on top of that, right, so then you say you look at all of these people and you give them advancement. Now what do we do? So next slide. Now we think about strategically staffing them. So now we're saying, here are all these people. We figure out where all the talent is. We think about what certification could and should look like, and then we think about how do we arrange these people in schools? And so this is a huge part of our work right now. Next slide. Moving from this, which is every teacher doing the same thing for every group of kids, even though they may have different levels of experience and expertise. Next slide. To this. And so this is a model and a way of starting to think about how different people can start to work together, to share a roster of, of say, 100 learners. We are beginning, we are doing this now in 150 schools. So we start to see different people taking on different roles, paraprofessionals, the green people here, right, who become, who skill up to become student success coaches or become digital learning facilitators, people in the community who become project-based mentors, special education that is more integrated into these teams, people who are thinking about paid teacher residents. How do we use technology on top of all of this? How do we think about leadership in terms of lead teachers or people who are leading math for that team, even though maybe we're all still teaching math? But somebody who's really good at that, who's, who is leading that. So this is not all of these people, right? I wish we had all of these people for 100 kids. But this is the way that we're starting to think about different kinds of roles, and then we begin to think about then, how are they staffed? How do we use the same people? How do we make sure this is financially neutral? Because if I come in and tell you this is going to cost a bazillion dollars, I might as well go home. But it doesn't. This is how do we use the same people? How do we skill up people? How do we think about professional learning in some different ways? Excellent. This is a small school. Districts right now are struggling. We know we've got rural schools that are small schools. But we also know we have districts right here in Phoenix that are struggling with low enrollment. And also using this to think about staffing and how you staff across small schools, particularly small K-8 schools with teams. And so this is an example of one school that has moved to team-based models and what some of these things begin to look like and how they're utilizing different people across, across teams and how they're thinking about mixed grade teams. So there is no one model to this, but these are solutions. As people are thinking about what to do about some of the challenges that we have, nobody wants to close schools today. We do have a school that actually is a small school, bringing in entrepreneurs. But part of the contracts with those entrepreneurs and using hoteling space, right, because their space is actually to work with kids. And so we're seeing a lot of creativity about who's out there, the talent that is out there, and how do we start to build these teams around kids? Next slide. There's been a domino effect to these teams. There are 68 team, team-based models here in Arizona, 150 you'll see across the country in 16 states. But this also has this huge domino effect, which to me is, has been the most remarkable thing about this because, one, it changes working conditions, more collaborative, it is less isolating, two things we learned during COVID. Nobody wants to be isolated. Everybody wants more flexibility. This is creating less isolated, more flexible jobs. We're seeing variable class size ratios. The teaching and learning is much more learner-centered. Teachers who say, I know my 100 kids better than I ever knew my 25. More opportunities now for entry, for specialization, for advancement. It's changing remarkably our teacher preparation program. We think about the systems, particularly with technology and technology systems today that can help support these kinds of things. And, and then changing all of, all, everything that we are doing with educator preparation. Next slide. These are our key findings. We have mostly focused on educators. We're getting to student achievement data. Not quite there yet. I'm hearing it'll be like maybe this week. We've got a summit coming up and, and there'll be some big announcements as we've, we've been able to get a big tranche of data here recently. But these are the kinds of findings that we're getting. We're seeing equal lower turnover rates, higher evaluation scores for teacher, more likely to consider teaching, more likely to recommend teaching. Because I have to tell you, my students go into schools to do internships in their sophomore year, and it's teachers that are telling them to get out now. They are more satisfied. They're reporting better student-teacher interactions. They collaborate more and fewer sick days and require fewer substitute teachers. All good for our profession. Next slide. So these are some of the schools that are implementing. You can see how we've, we've grown over time. Keep going. This is where we are today. So lots of states that are starting to, to pick up with us. We, we are leading the pack. We have brought in almost 1,000 people to Arizona over the last few years, including 100 people by the end of the spring from the Netherlands who are moving very quickly around this. So people are coming here. They are recognizing Arizona for this work. They want to see it. They're going back and they're thinking about how to replicate this and how do they do this in their own context? We would like to see state agencies, right, begin to rethink, help us to, to think about this, right, in terms of client, compliance and certification requirements? How do we incent these kinds of collaborations between educator preparation programs and schools and other stakeholders? Next slide. But we do see this as a new workforce vision. We talk about workforce and technology. We talk about workforce and engineering. We talk about workforce and all kinds of things. We never, ever talk about the workforce when it comes to education, and we don't talk about it as something that we would design in a new way. Next slide. So we are trying to do that. We are designing what we think is the future. We need to prepare educators for what we think the workforce is going to look like. And that includes who they are, how they work together, and how they, how they function in schools and how we strategically staff. So I'm here with my colleagues, Carlin Ledlow, Lynn and Audreyne. We can answer any questions about what we're doing, how we're doing it, but we are thrilled with this work. We would love to have both the department and the board marching alongside us, trying to move this thing forward and, and getting us to scale. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Basile, for your presentation. Priority of teacher recruitment and retention is foremost for the board, so this was very timely. Do I have any colleagues that have questions? Dr. Corr?
Thank you, President Haley, and thank you for that, Dean Basile. Very impressive. Obviously, very innovative. You guys at ASU should market that innovation thing a little bit more. I'm, a comment and then a question. Applaud you on the approach to student teaching, right? This concept of we have a large teacher shortage and then pay to work for free doesn't add a, a solution there. So the approach of getting those hours, getting that experience and earning some pay is, is obviously brilliant. My question revolves around the physical space. So our, most of our schools are certainly built for one teacher, 25 students, one room. How, what's the approach of working around that or what does that look like?
So schools have taken different approaches and, and, you know, like some schools have done nothing, right? And they figure it out and they, you know, they'll put little footprints around all the, you know, classrooms. So they're grouping, you know, four classrooms or three classrooms and, you know, they make sure that all the names of every teacher is on the door and they're, they decorate the rooms, right, in a different way. Every room now doesn't need to have everything that every other room has. And so they think about that, right, as one learning space, and you figure out how to move and how to group and how to regroup kids and where adults. And then there are others, right? I mean, now you see brand new schools that are being built that are actually built for this with glass walls and doors and all of those kinds of things. In the middle of that, if you look at a school like Stevenson Elementary School that has cinder block buildings, you know, rectangle building, no windows, four rooms and, you know, quartered in four rooms. They went in and they put glass doors in between the rooms. And that space right now, if you go in there, is one very large learning space. And you see different ways that now teachers are thinking about those spaces, how they utilize those spaces, how they're moving kids, how they're grouping, how they're regrouping, and how they begin to think about that. So it's everything from, you know, soup to nuts, and everybody has to figure out we're, we're, you know, we have what we have. But it should not keep anybody from doing this. And let me just say, we just changed the name of our college to the Mary Lou Fulton College for Teaching and Learning Innovation. So we're leaning into that innovation thing.
I love it. Dr. Clay, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, President Haley. Oops, here you go. Question and concern. I love the model and some of the things that you are bringing out. I think there are things that we've been thinking but have never said before, especially the pay part for student teaching. My concern, especially coming from rural schools, is that the models that you've put on your PowerPoint, your presentation doesn't reflect all the schools, okay? And what will happen is even if I were to bring this down to where I'm at or to some of the rural schools, just looking at this two slides, the two models we have will just, in their minds, they will shut it out and move forward because it doesn't reflect who they are. So if you could add another slide that talks about, this is how it will look if we're a rural school, and we have a lot of one-room schoolhouses. We have schools that may have three or four teachers and 70 students, et cetera, et cetera. If they don't see themselves in these models, soon as they see this presentation, if they're in a group, in their minds, they're going to start doing other things because they need to see something that looks like them in here. But again, this is great. That's my only concern.
We have, we have a whole slide presentation for rural schools. We have a number of rural schools. We've got some in Arizona, but in Colorado, we've been moving with a lot of rural schools there. There's a whole nother PowerPoint slide I can send you with rural school models. The other place that is moving on rural schools that I think, that I'm finding really interesting right now is actually at Appalachian State. Very small school. I think it's a school of what is it? I think it's like 50 kids, 50, 70 kids, right? It's, it's what you just described.
A little smaller.
Yeah, it's, so, look, all of this is a design process. But if we've got those kinds of schools, we're also happy to say, all right, let's, let's do more of that. But I, I think we have more. I can, I'd be happy to send you some of the other pieces we have on some of those rural schools.
I would greatly appreciate that because these are some of the things that we're focusing on in our strategic plan right now. So I'd appreciate any information you have.
Yeah, I will send.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Member Kavikis?
Good morning, Dean Basile. My biggest question is, what are the barriers systemic? Are there barriers that the state board or legislature could address, and are there any unique to Arizona considering that you're working?
I think, yeah, it's a good question. I think there, I think there, wow, the biggest barrier to all of this is we all went to school on a one-teacher, one-classroom model. And I say that and yet nothing is new. This is not new. In the 60s and 70s, I go to Mirabella and people go, oh, my gosh, this was the best years of my teaching in the 60s and 70s, right, when we were teens. But I do think that we, we do need to sit and we need to look at certification. We need to think about more levels of certification. What can we add? How do we think about credentialing that is not, we think about ASU credentialing, which is fine, but I think there are others. Especially as we think particularly about adjunct pools, as we think about who else could come in and start to, to be in schools and work in schools. You know, I also think that, you know, we've, we've, you're going to talk about A through F. You know, we've got to think about how do people actually feel safe and how do they get permission, right? How do we do that in terms of permission to do this in some ways? Because I think that is the thing that, that does keep people from doing this. And so sometimes it's not specific policies, but it is the approach that we take in being open to just allowing people to try these things and say, yes, go, go do them. We want to see what happens. One thing that we have not experienced, which is, which I think is really important, all this is, we've not had implementation dip. And people worry about that. School leaders worry about that. They worry about their grade, you know, their letter grade. They worry about those are the things, those are the barriers, those are the, those are the policy things that are getting in the way. And, and they shouldn't be. But I think there has to be some signaling from the department, from the state board that says, yes, go try this, go do, like, let's see what this could look like in Arizona. We want people coming here to Arizona. We want, we want to be the state, right, where people are coming. We could have thousands of people coming here. We already do have hundreds.
Thank you. I also have one observation, and it was actually an article that I wrote recently that I think you had a chance to look at, is that if you could take that entire slide deck and narrow the lens down just to special education in that traditionally, a special education teacher, especially in the larger districts, is expected to be a case manager and expert in compliance of the law of IDEA. How to modify lessons for 13 different disability categories, and you could even go down further than that. And so we see that issue, and I appreciate the inclusion of special education in the teams. But I think we could even look at that differently as well. The statistic that always boggles my mind and shocks a lot of people is that 67% of kids with IEPs in Arizona spend 80% of their day in general education classes. But we still traditionally think about special ed as those kids in those classrooms down the hall. And that, that kind of blows my mind. And when I think about when traditionally a young girl, stereotypically, enters a college of education program, one of the first decisions they have to make, and I hate these terms, but I'm using them to make a point, is whether I want to teach these kids or those kids. And so often, we know statistically, they teach, they, I want to teach these kids. But then what happens is they get to the classroom and they find out, oh, I have those kids in my classrooms. That's 67%. And they say, those kids are supposed to be in those classrooms, and we, and we get, we see that frustration. And in my mind, teachers that are trained in special education should be the lead instructors of a school, right? They should be the best teachers in every school. So I throw that out there because I would love to work with you to think about how we can unpack that as well, because we know the retention and recruitment issues are pretty much the highest nationally, special education. So thank you for letting me.
Agree and yes. Let's do that.
Think of, any other questions? Member Clark?
Thank you. Thank you so much for that presentation. I just had a few questions. The 68 schools, I think it was 68 schools that are doing the team-based model operating in Arizona, are they all a public district, public charter, a blend?
I believe they're all public district schools. Most of them are Mesa. Mesa Public Schools is the district that stood up very, very early and said, we'll have over half of our schools in team-based models in two, three years, and they have done that. And so they've got now 40, 40 some of those schools are Mesa schools. Kyrene has moved, Pendergast has moved to, to, they're moving that this direction. And then, and then others in Yuma. Where else are we? I don't know if we have any, I don't know if we have any charters right now. Oh, Maricopa County Schools. Yeah, I don't think we have charters. Yeah, it is.
Do the, do the charter schools in Arizona, based on any data you have, tend to have the same hiring challenges for faculty as the public district schools?
Do you? Yes.
We have data on that. I was curious. No, maybe not. Okay, I'm just wondering.
I don't know the answer to that. I have, I have to.
Anecdotally, I would say yes.
Yeah.
Sure, for sure. Just curious to see it on that.
I don't think it's different, and we're not, and we're pretty agnostic about this, whether it's private charter.
That's why I think the data is so interesting to know.
It really has been, you know, who's raised their hand first.
Yep. And then for, for the Teachers College, do you guys keep data on the students that graduate and then whether they're choosing public district, public charter, private, like what percentages are, are and why?
I don't know that off the top of my head. We'd have to get that from the.
And the only reason I'm wondering is we all know that this is an issue. I know that for my kid's hybrid private school, they had over 100 applications for open teacher positions. And so I think there's a good question in there. Well, like, what's going on? Like, do we have the same issue in districts and charters? If not, why not? And what can we understand to solve that issue? If we don't have the same issue, issue in district versus private schools, why not? And what can we do to look at those issues? Maybe it's a certification thing. Maybe it's the schools themselves, but there's a variety of questions we could probably answer in there.
Yeah. And I, and I do want to call attention that this is, there, there's a perception of working condition around all of this, right? So this is, in some ways, this is about teacher shortage, but I would also be pitching this in some ways, even if we did not have a teacher shortage. Because I just think that the one-teacher, one-classroom model is not getting us to where we need to go, and it's too variable. The, the experience and the expertise of every single one of those teachers that we've talked about highly qualified teachers for a year, 20 years ago, and we've never been able to get there. I mean, if I could put, you know, Jason Cantonese or, you know, like, if I can put them in every classroom out there, I would, you know, like, I, maybe, maybe. And they both would probably say, you know, being in a one-teacher, one-classroom model is also, you know, very, very difficult today. So, I mean, this is, so, yes, we talk about this, you know, it's, it's. So, I mean, this is, so, yes, we talk about this, you know, it's, it's to, to address teacher shortage, we need to change the learner experience, the educator experience. But we also need to change this, this organizational design and, and then, you know, really think about what policies have to change.
I just had one final question on the data side. I didn't, I saw all the feedback of the teacher feedback, which was awesome. Is there any data yet, or is there a plan to collect data on the actual student test course?
It's, it's coming.
Oh.
We're hoping.
Okay.
I'm, I'm hoping we will have that from Mesa and really shortly, next week.
Thank you.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you so much, Member Cantonese.
Thank you. I know that we've, we've spoken about this, and I think one of the best things for people to do is go out and see the schools and see everything. How, how would districts do that? Or how would my colleagues do that? Because I think that the more people see something, the better.
Seriously. So we have a whole infrastructure set up for this. We have site visits every month. I can send you all that information. We would love to have a, we'd love to have a group from the board come out. We've had the Arizona Chamber was just out. We've had Phoenix Chambers coming out. So we're trying to get some of the business community also to come see these models. That's, I think that's helpful as we move this forward. But we've got site visits all the time. But I think, I do think it's March 6th, where there's a one-day site visit for, for folks locally, if, if you'd like to come, and I can send that information. We should get that audition. Hi, Sean. And we can get that out. And then the other part of this is that we've been building the infrastructure to support, you know, schools and districts that want to enter and then, you know, explore and then kind of move forward and then, and then support, you know, down the road. So that's a whole, it's a whole infrastructure we're building around this and trying to get to, to region centers across, across the country, really. But I still, I don't want Michigan to beat us to this, and they're, they're, they're on it, let me tell you.
Yeah, this is, this is a great group of people to get the word out, especially like sharing it with our networks. But I think that there's a lot of people that would benefit from just seeing the model in action.
I agree. Seeing is believing.
Any other questions? Dr. Hagerman? No. Well, great. Thank you so much for your presentation. We really appreciate your time, and I think Director Ross and Deputy Director DePlante will follow up with you on the rural data, test score data and information on the March tour. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all very, very much.
President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. My apologies for not being here at the beginning of the meeting. I was in a very time-sensitive meeting about a large issue, which we can talk about later. So up next, we have presentation discussion and possible action for A through F appeals, and this will be Jessica Mueller from our team.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, and members of the board. This is the item where we are reviewing the A through F appeals from the 2023, 2023 issuance of the state accountability letter grade system. Every year, we approve the policies and procedures that govern this process. The three board members, which is Dr. Clay, Vice President Hagerman, and Member Meyerson, as appeals committee members, review all of the applications that come in, and they make their recommendations that you have on this agenda for review. And then Sean Smith and I will just stand for any questions that you have. Thank you.
Great. Any board members do, does anyone have any questions, or is there an item that we need to pull or anything?
I'll just recuse myself from this vote since we're part of the appeal process.
All right. Do I, does any member have any questions? Others? Okay. Do I have a motion that the State Board of Education approved the A through F appeals committee recommendations, rationales, and conditions as provided?
So moved.
Member Clark first, Dr. Core second. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. The appeals pass. All right, moving on to item seven. Or not seven, what was that? Sorry. Item six C. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. This is a presentation and discussion overview of the A through F letter grade accountability system, including an update on the timeline for implementation of indicator scoring and the introduction of a process for the board to review the founding principles of the A through F accountability system over the course of the next months. With us today are Sean Smith, the Chief Accountability Officer from the Arizona Department of Education, and then our own data and research analyst, Jessica Mueller. I'm going to actually kick off the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and kick off the presentation quickly to just discuss a little bit about the, the system. That the, as a reminder, the A through F system is a system of continuous improvement. The depart, the board oversees three technical advisory committees. There's a traditional alternative and AOI who meet at least once a month, quite often more than once a month, to work to gather input, review data, and refine and improve the system. And so that's an important element as we move forward in our discussion today. Sean?
Thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Pleasure to be with you this morning and kind of give you updates on the latest and overview of the overall system and where we're at on indicator scoring. So we'll jump to the next slide. As most of you are probably familiar with, the basis for the A through F accountability system that we have is spelled out in statute. This harkens back to roughly about 2015, 2016. And based on this, the board at the time created a set of agreements and worked with the technical advisory committees to establish a set of indicators that were part of the, that are now part of the accountability system. And we'll go to the next slide there. So you can see, there we go. Each of these statutory requirements has been kind of mapped onto one of the indicators that we have. So across the models, we have seven different indicators that are designed to measure outcomes that schools have in these areas. Let's go ahead to the next slide. Here, I want to point out, as Executive Director Ross mentioned, there are three advisory committees that correspond to each of the three different models. And there's a model that's set up for traditional schools in K8 and 912, so they have separate outcomes that are measured and tailored to the, the results that they're working towards, as well as an alternative model that is set up for schools who are specifically designed to meet the needs of students who are either off track to graduate or facing specific circumstances that can help them be more successful in an alternative setting. Next slide. We'll go into a breakdown of what each of the indicators represents within the model and what each of them is measuring. One of the main ideas that you'll see throughout all of the models is that there tends to be a balance amongst the indicators of status and growth. Almost every indicator takes a look at where is a school in terms of the outcomes on this measure, and how much have they grown or improved, and tries to, seeks to provide a balance between those two and recognize that some schools are going to be starting off in a place with a higher outcome and demonstrating, or, and maybe not demonstrating as much growth. Or the opposite may be true, where they're starting off with a lower outcome and demonstrating high growth. The largest portion of the system in the traditional models, so the two there on the left, has to do with state achievement testing. So this is the AASA and the ACT tests. As you can see in the K8 model, that's 80% of the entire model is devoted to state assessment results. And in 912, half of the model. It's a smaller piece of the pie in alternative. A lot of this is due to the fact that, you know, as we work with our technical advisory committees, one of the things they point out is that the average age of enrollment for students in their schools is 18. The vast majority of their school, or a large proportion of their students are not going to test. They're coming after the testing window. They're coming as seniors who are off track to graduate. So it's often hard to get a signal on a lot of those schools because many of their students do not participate in state testing. They're already past that point. And the results, because those students are often coming based on, you know, they're behind in credits because they're struggling academically, often the test results are very similar, and it doesn't help us distinguish between the outcomes those schools are getting. So we'll see later on that we have some other metrics that are tailored to try and evaluate the success that they're having with their students. It's split up, as I mentioned. There's a piece for, so in the traditional models, you've got 30% that's devoted to what we call proficiency. That's the status measurement. It's not, it's not necessarily the percent of students passed. What we take is basically an average score that kids got on the test, right? We look at their different performance levels. And so you get kind of a measurement, the higher scores their kids have, then the higher number of points they'll achieve there. In green, the other portion of the model is growth. This is probably the most rigorous measure we have in the accountability system as we measure it under the hood. What it takes is it takes every student that looks, where were they last year, and then compared to their peers who had the exact same score on the test, it, it calculates to see how well did they do? Were they at the top of student results for those students who started in the same place? Or, or were they bottom or the middle? This gives us an idea of, rather than, you know, kind of what we see in proficiency, which gives us a snapshot of each grade coming in compared to the grade last year, growth is going to tell us on a student-by-student basis, are schools able to move the students that they have forward and make progress, whether they're starting off very high or very low, or just in the middle? We get a measurement of how they've been able to progress. Do you want to just pause and take questions at any point, or just kind of go and get to the questions? Okay. Let's go look, look at the next slide here. The English Learner Indicator, again, within that, there's a balance of growth and proficiency. So we take, take a look at the reclassification rate, as well as how much students have improved. This is a large slice of the pie. It's fully 10%. And often, at, at many schools, this can be very few students, as few as 10 students. And this was intentional. The design here was to make sure that, that those students were not invisible, that even if there were a small percentage who might not have popped in the overall broader picture in that big state testing piece that we saw, these results, as they are measured on Azella, are specifically called out for 10% of the model there. We'll hit the next slide now. These pieces, so we've got acceleration readiness and college and career readiness. These are the ones I like to call the choose-your-own-adventure sections. These are, I say that because there are more points available within these than are necessary to meet the full point total in, in the system. In particular, we see this as a, is, can be powerful in the college and career readiness indicators. What this lets a student do, you know, they're able to get points for CTE outcomes, for AP, for dual enrollment, for diploma seals. It, what it provides is, instead of every student having to complete every activity, counselors and school leaders and teachers can all focus on what the needs of an individual student are as they're preparing for life after high school. And so it kind of fosters those conversations. In acceleration readiness, one of the biggest portions is designed to close gaps amongst student subgroups. And again, there are different ways that a, that a school can put together those points, whether it be achievement in eighth-grade math or third-grade reading, gap closing, inclusion of students with disabilities in mainstream classes, and improving their chronic absenteeism percentages. So again, more opponents on the table. Schools do not have to earn every single point available there to get their full contingency. We'll go to the next slide. Graduation rate. I'll direct your attention over here to the alternative model, where we see this now becomes the biggest portion of the alternative model is related to helping students achieve those graduation outcomes. In the traditional model on the left, again, it follows that same dynamic where under the hood, there's half of it for achieving a good graduation rate, half of it for improving it from previous years. Within the growth to graduation, so we see on the, on the right-hand side in alternative, there's the lighter red. I don't know if it shows well on the slide there. That's 10%. So that's their graduation rate. Again, these are going to be, these schools are going to be serving a high proportion of students who are off track to graduate. So we look there to see what outcome they're getting for those cohorts. And then the large 30% has to do with, are students re-enrolling? Once they've got them in school, do they come back to school again? Are they earning credits toward graduation? And then one of the, one of the prime things that we look at there is for students who are kind of within striking distance of graduation in that given year, can we reasonably expect them to graduate? How many of those students are able to kind of cross the finish line and make it to graduation? So that's their, sorry, on-track-to-graduate indicator. All right, and then we'll hit the next slide. Finally, we have bonus points. There's a series of activities that schools can do. These points are added after the final percentage is calculated, so they can go above and beyond. Points for services provider, or excuse me, the number of students enrolled in special education services. Proficiency on AZPSI, post-secondary enrollment, subgroup and graduation rate for alternative schools. And those things kind of fill out the mix to bring schools across the finish line sometimes when they're focusing on these. And then the final piece of the overall system on the next slide just hits briefly on LEA letter grades. So the district or the charter as a whole is going to get a grade as well. It's just a GPA calculation based on the grades of the schools that are members. And the important thing to remember here is that it's not weighted. So a small school with only a few students is going to count in that GPA the same weight as a large school with thousands of students. The design of that was to make sure that, again, no school was kind of falling through the cracks, that each school's letter grade weighed equally there. All right. We'll move briefly into indicator scoring on the next slide. Did you want to jump in?
So President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, as you know, we've been updating you on this for quite a while. There is statute that calls for the indicators in the A through F accountability system, so proficiency, growth, EL, growth and proficiency, like Sean just spoke about, having those receive their own letter grades as well. The technical advisory committees began working on this quite a while ago and originally believed they could have indicator scoring ready for the letter grade release October 25. In doing the work, something really interesting happened, and, and it's part of that continuous improvement process that I talked about at the start of this item. In, in looking at the summative letter grade, and the summative letter grade is still what drives legislation. So any sort of consequence at the charter level, at a school improvement level, that's all driven by the summative letter grade, not the indicators. So in looking at the summative letter grade through the lens of indicator scoring, the technical advisory committees were able to see some issues in the summative system that they were able to, are, are able to sort of newly address. And there's some issues that have maybe been lingering for a bit in the system. There is no perfect system, but this is a pretty great one. We get calls from other states all the time about our letter grade system and, and looking at how we're doing certain things and how that can be borrowed nationally. But it's exciting because, again, the lens of indicator scoring opened up some new avenues by which to improve the summative letter grade. So what we have done is, the tax have done, is we've just removed the timeline for the moment on indicator scoring to give them time to revise that summative system and then get indicator scoring right. We want it to be done well, not necessarily quickly. So they may still meet the October 25 deadline. We are just not putting that deadline specifically on them at the moment so that they have the room to do, continue to do that important work. Next slide. One thing I do want to emphasize, though, is even with the change in timeline, oh, I jumped, yeah, sorry, I jumped your. Yeah, let's do that, and then we'll go back to, sorry. Even with the change in timeline, there is not a change to the implementation plan for when indicator scoring is ready. And I just want to highlight that because this is a very school-friendly implementation plan, because there are a lot of, anytime there's change, there's some concern. And so the plan is still, once that those indicators are, are, the system is ready, the department will release through its ADE Connect system the last three years of what letter grade, excuse me, indicator letter grades would have been for each school. So they can go in, they can see a snapshot, they can see their trend data, they can see where they would have landed, just to have a more comfort with the system before it's publicly released. And then in between that and the public release with letter grades, the department and the board will work to develop guidance, videos, you know, webinars, all sort of supports for the, the field in speaking to every level, their, their students, their teachers, their families about indicator scoring. So that part has not changed. We want to emphasize that. Right now, it's just the timeline that has changed. There we go. As Executive Director Ross mentioned, there are really a lot of.
Uh, as Executive Director Ross mentioned, um, there are really a, a lot of positives about our system. One of the things that it's uh, strong at, its strengths at is tying the schools' letter grade to student outcomes. There was tons of work done amongst multiple stakeholder groups to kind of reach those policy priorities. And as, as Sean mentioned, what we found as we were kind of probing the individual indicators was that not, not at all times were the way we were crunching the numbers supporting those policy agreements. And it really, it really kind of brought it to light when we looked at them individually, what was happening in the summative. Um, so if we can jump to the next slide, I'll, I'll kind of highlight one of the insights that came out of that work. Um, our current system is a compensatory system. Um, so it's designed kind of like I talked about, it has those balances between status and proficiency. But the design of the balance, um, looks like what we've got on the left. We've got uh, primarily one indicator that has a big heavy weight where almost no schools are going to get full points. And to balance that out in the system, there are several other indicators that almost for all schools award full points. What's raised the difficulty there is we've tried to implement indicator scoring and particularly as we've tried to improve areas of it, is that if you tinker with anything on the, on one side of the balance, it shifts the whole equation for schools in all kinds of ways that are unpredictable and not necessarily uniformly helpful. We don't get an improvement model, we just kind of get a shift in, in who's benefiting and who's not. And so one of the things we've talked about just recently is, you know, finding ways to balance out the system in a way where each individual indicator is balanced like we have on the right. Opening an avenue for us to improve or tailor each one without throwing off the balance of everything else in the system. Um, and I think that's one of the main hurdles that we've kind of seen is, as we've been grappling with this work is, how do we get that right so that we can first uh, tune some of these areas and make it work for the overall? I'll hit real quick on the next slide. We'll get deeper into these in the future, I'm sure. But just, one of the interesting things that we saw was there were objective mathematical things happening. These are the kind of things that, you know, if you're opening a data science book on machine learning or modeling, these would be some of the things that would be in there like, hey, here's how you need to adjust your data sets. And so there are predictable and objective ways that we can look at these. There are focused areas that we can um, refine. So that the system then allows us to make adjustments that will improve things for schools in general. So um, just kind of from the standpoint of, you know, it's, it's nice knowing that there are objective ways that aren't theoretical that we can look at to, to make improvements here in the short term and, and move us forward. And then with that, uh, I'll go ahead and stand for questions. And I know I, I kind of like blasted out a ton of information there very quickly, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for your presentation. Mr. Smith, uh, do any of my colleagues have questions, Dr. Clay?
I have a comment. I've sat on, on some of your meetings and you're talking about um, deep thought and um, unpeeling, peeling that onion back and saying, wait a minute, this, this might not be right. Usually you're in meetings where the train continues on regardless of what they find. But what I really like about what's going on right now is that we're stopping. And we don't have a problem with readjusting what we're doing for the good of our students. So I'm going to tell you, um, I applaud your work, I applaud the work of the team. And I applaud that everybody on that team gets a chance to say, this is how I see things. They get to talk about their perspective, especially the perspective of the students and getting the full um, how a student, what do, how you call it? Um, the full, how the full student looks instead of just, just bits and pieces. So thank you for this. Um, I look forward to the outcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Member Kevikas.
Hi Sean, thank you. I have a couple of questions. We've been talking about student growth targets since we were doing the No Child Left Behind waiver twenty years ago. So I was wondering, I didn't, I want, didn't want to assume that the whole board knew about what the differences between SGP's and SGT's are. You could give us like a two second and, and tell me what the status is. Cause it does always concern me that we see great growth, but if they're never getting to proficiency.
Thank you, yeah. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, thank you for, that's an excellent question. So when we're looking at measures for growth, as, as Member Kevikas pointed out, one of the dilemmas is, you know, we don't want to give back a number that says, oh, students are growing kind of like a participation award that just says, hey, you know, you grew a lot, but are you ever kind of on track to proficiency? So in those calculations, there's a number called student growth target. That, that is a companion piece to what we have currently, which is the student growth percentiles, right? The percentiles give uh, essentially a ranking that's comparative. It says, how are they doing compared to their peers? And then the student growth target is going to give a result compared to a standard, right? Are they on track to proficiency within three years? As we've looked at it with the technical advisory committee, um, that's one of those things that, that has been uh, an area where we've tried to be real honest about how it's working and how well it's, it's serving what it's supposed to do. How much precision can we get there? That when that number comes back, we get a value between zero and a hundred, right? It says like, hey, here's their growth target. Here's what they need to hit. And what we've found is in the current way we use it, it doesn't always give us a real accurate, or excuse me, in the current way. Last time we used it was, was prior to COVID. But what we found is it wasn't always giving us the right signal, right? It was kind of reinforcing um, some of the things we saw with sampling error. So we've been working with the developer of that model to try and talk about, how can we use that? Because exactly what you said, we don't want to create a system where we're just saying, hey, you're growing, you know, you're growing a lot or, or you're growing better than, than the student next to you, but never on track to achievement. We've been fortunate as we've looked at the, the data these last couple of years. That's been one of the conversations we've had is, you know, are, are those growth numbers that we're getting back in student growth percentile? Are they simply creating a system where everybody gets a pass? Or are they rigorous? Currently with the state of things, we can say that they are corresponding to uh, a highly rigorous thing. That students who are demonstrating high growth are on track academically. Students who are demonstrating low growth are, are sliding back. So we, we kind of keep a close eye on that to make sure that those aren't getting out of whack. And we've been asking those questions about how can we bring profitably student growth target back? So that that gives that information back to teachers and the public and school leaders.
Thank you. Um, my next question is, I understand why we define FAE the way we do, why we need three years of data for us, why get all of that? But we also know nationally that one of the biggest predictors of students who are struggling is mobility. So I've always worried that we're missing the kids that are most at risk by through all those numbers. So I'm wondering if they're tracking that. Cause back in the day, that was actually the number one thing that uh, US Ed was asking us is what percent of students are included in your state accountability? And honestly, at that time, I was like, wow, no one's ever asked me that question. But it really is important because those are the kids that are at risk of struggling the most. Are we looking at that and do you have any data on that?
Thank you, yes. We've looked at that a little bit, so um, we did some things a couple of years ago with the percent tested to, to kind of take care of some of the mobility concerns. I think maybe about a year ago, we looked at your question like you'd brought up. Um, what percentage of students are included in the accountability measurements? And I think we were roughly ninety-seven percent of students are in there. And then the further work kind of, uh, you highlight a good avenue that we, that we could explore, which is, you know, given the constraints to make sure we get the right signal, are there steps we need to take to, to make sure that those three percent or, or some of those students who are moving are not invisible, that we're, we're keeping tabs on them? And I think that, that kind of hearkens back to that work of, ideally the endeavor right now is to get things tuned enough that we can start making those adjustments without creating big systemic earthquakes throughout the thing.
Thank you, Sean. Following up on that, that three percent, as you know better than I, that number is very different by LEA though. In some LEAs, it may only be one percent, but in some LEAs, it's going to be like fifty percent mobility. So that's why I think that's such a critical um, thing. Cause one of the things that I, I made some notes is, I think it's important to look at that data at a school or at least an LEA level because you can have a school that gets an A that had ninety-five percent of their students included, but a school who gets an A that only fifty to sixty percent of their test scores are included. That's not apples to apples and nor does it send the right message to either parents or schools. So I didn't know if there, if there's a way we can look at that or talk about that.
Thank you, yeah. Uh, so that is one of the things, and like I said, if we, if we pulled up that math slide again, sampling error, you're describing exactly, you know, apples to apples comparison. How do we, it'd be one thing if, if we took all the schools in the state and we said, hey, you're getting the exact same number of, of high mobility students of minimally proficient, of partially proficient. And then we just looked at the results at the end of the year like, perfect. Um, they're, they'd be very comparable. Um, so that's, that's a very active discussion like you're describing is when we have these different uh, makeups in different schools, what do we do to control, um, to make sure that we're getting as much of an apples to apples comparison as possible? So yes, you're right on in, in that avenue.
With uh, with your permission, I have one last question. Okay. On the, I think it was the alternative high schools, we're looking at on track to graduation. How, how do we get that data? Is that LEA submitted and calculated or does ADE have access to student and credit? Achievement accumulation, like can, do, do we, I don't, cause I know we didn't before, but I know things have changed. Do we now have, does ADE now have the ability to look at um, Liberty High School and say, this percent of kids have this amount of credits? Or is that just LEA calculated and submitted?
Thank you. Um, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Another great question. So that is self-reported and then like all self-reported data, we conduct an audit afterwards. So um, our general process is we look for patterns of schools who look like they may be struggling with the definition or we have a training opportunity. In general, what we find is most schools are um, are very upfront and, and right on the ball. And then sometimes we'll get misunderstanding errors, so we'll kind of uh, reach out to those schools, go over it, look at student records and kind of go back through. But um, yeah, so falls in, in that category of self-reported data that is then audited the following year.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other questions from members of the board? I do have, um, in that case, I'll ask a few questions. Just are there other states that are having similar issues that we are? And if so, have you consulted them and what sort of advice have they provided?
Thank you, President Haley. Uh, yes, excellent question. So um, we meet three times a year with kind of this group of the accountability folks from other states. And we have a, we have a conference where we get together for a few days each year. And, and yes, it's uh, the struggles that we encounter tend to be um, the, the same struggles that, that most states encounter, which is, um, you know, you've got uh, some statutory requirements federally and then usually at the state level. They tend to align fairly closely, but there's some distinctions. And then data availability, so you've got the intersection of what's in statute and what data do we get back that's reliable? That's going to be uniform and that's going to be outcome based rather than prescribing a, a method for a school to do. And so we kind of get this Venn diagram of this slice that almost all of the states get of what's available, what's required. Um, and trying to make the most of that in a way that reports back fairly. And so we, we encounter a lot of the same issues, you know, we'll kind of get together. We'll talk methods and, and exchange ideas on, on where other states are at, but we see a lot of those same things. State testing, um, graduation, English learner outcomes, those tend to be the big areas. Trying to balance, how much do we, you know, uh, one of my colleagues in Illinois, you know, she showed up at the last meeting with a, a red shirt that said, sometimes you have to love something enough not to put it in your accountability system. But the idea, you know, how, how well with the data that we have, can we get this signal that, that represents what's happening versus how much do we want to direct? How much weight do we want to prioritize where schools are working to now serve the accountability system rather than the accountability system and helping and informing schools? So excellent question and, and yeah, that's, that's the exact kind of conversation that happens nationally.
That's helpful. Hopefully you guys are sharing best prac- practices and um, can help, help us find some solutions. My other question is, uh, initially this fall, the goal was to provide schools the component indicator scoring so they could begin to um, internally process and um, be familiar with what would become available in the fall. If we proceed on time, that still may present schools, um, I don't know, they might be a little surprised. They might be concerned. How might you all propose the board address that? Given that we have statutory requirements, but we also want to make sure that schools are prepared.
Thank you, President Haley. I think that uh, Executive Director Ross explained that really well. That, you know, when we put that slide up there that kind of showed, uh, rather than the timeline, the sequence of events. And so uh, as, as he recommended, you know, sticking with that idea that before we're releasing this publicly, schools get a chance to make sense of that, provide us feedback and say, you know, hey, take a look at this, consider this before you go out. That's where we get a lot of um, helpful input from, you know, small schools or who may have situations that are unique. And we can kind of adapt that a lot of times. So um, that sequence of events provides some good guidance on, and, and that's been informed by stakeholder feedback as well.
That's great. Any other questions?
Just that I ask, we give him a cool T-shirt for the next meeting.
Yes.
Exactly. I love it. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Uh, so there's one more small component to this item Jessica's going to introduce, which will um, introduce a process you all will be undertaking over the next few months.
Thank you so much. It's hard to follow Chief Accountability Officer Sean Smith, but I may be very brief. Um, we have the A three F principles agreement, which we did discuss at the board retreat this August twenty twenty-four. These were adopted in twenty fourteen and they represent, next slide, uh, these foundational values is what they're supposed to reflect. Fairness and equity, having that student level information and getting as drilled down as we can. It especially helps schools as they're trying to, you know, improve those students' outcomes when they're working in the classroom. Uh, transparency, ease of understanding and ease of communication. It's a very loaded area and it is probably the biggest level of focus that um, the accountability committees place in after they're looking at that data. Uh, and then incentives for action. And this is a large question that comes to the board, um, when we're reflecting on new changes or uh, things that we're looking to do in A three F. Next slide. So it starts with the philosophical agreements. I'm not going to read all of these off. They are a summary of what is in the document. It is still just one page, uh, but they are a little bit more detailed. I'll highlight a few of those in that academic growth and looking at progress is high value to the um, to the board and in uh, to the committees as they're looking at the accountability system. Uh, that aspect of all schools having the chance to earn that A status. This comes up frequently in discussions with the board members, discussions with our committee members as well. And we can start to examine data around this as we look forward to, to see if, are we, are we achieving this goal? And I think that question came up from a board member as well. Next slide. We have technical agreements. These go a lot to that implementation of indicator scoring, getting the information to schools that they can validate the information that they're provided. In this technical agreement, you'll see as well that post-secondary success is, is, is important too. Um, this is really drilled in through all of the agreements. The focus is not just K twelve, but what's happening with students uh, once they're beyond uh, their K twelve education. Next slide. And then the implementation agreements. These are founded based on um, presenting the information to schools as early as we can and as quickly. Also maintaining, as you mentioned, uh, President Haley, um, the uh, our, our statutory obligations that we have with state and with federal statute. Um, next slide. So what we're asking from the board going forward is that we want to revisit and examine and put these principles agreement under the microscope. We want to ensure that uh, the A three F letter grade system is effectively labeling schools. And so this review, um, you'll be provided information on what those state laws are, what the federal requirements are. And we'd really like to ask you to reflect first on those foundations that I addressed at the beginning and then uh, ranking on the principles of their importance, seeing if there are any that you want to, maybe it is add, alter, eliminate, or just really examine and put under that microscope in detail. Um, so this would be the first star of a revision process. This will be an evaluation form survey that's sent to you that's very similar to how we conducted our strategic plan where it'll be multi-phase. We'll bring this information as well as we're learning from you all to the accountability technical advisory committees and ask them to reflect and sort of have a back and forth discussion as well. Um, they really lean a lot on these principles agreement and they want them to build a system that reflects the values of the board going forward. So any questions at this time?
Member Kevikas.
Thank you. I know one of the critical agreements has always been transparency and I call that little A accountability, right? And I really want to applaud ADE's efforts to maintain the school letter grade website. And then I want to kind of include that in that conversation because it hasn't been updated in a while and how can, because that's really where parents are going to go to, our external stakeholders. Cause some of those things are really complicated to explain to parents, you know, it's like growth is for example. They understand if you've passed a test or not, but growth. And so maybe it's time to also evaluate that because I think we can accomplish some of those goals through a really robust website.
I hear that. Thank you so much, Member Kravikis. Any other comments or questions? We'll send out that survey in the beginning of February.
And President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. In the interest of transparency, we will also provide updates to the board in a public setting as that process goes on.
Member Meyerson.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for the incredible work that you've done as a member of the Appeals Committee, getting to see your particular amount of work and Sean Smith's on this. I'm so excited that you're going to lead this part of the process and just couldn't be more grateful to the support you've provided our committee throughout and your just knowledge of this process. And so just again, great work.
Thank you. And thank you to all the Appeals Committee members and each of you for helping us process.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I think we'll take a quick break. The goal will be to reconvene at 11:05 AM. Arizona time. Awesome. Well, thanks for everyone for taking a quick break. I think we needed it, shut your legs. Superintendent Horn was not with us at the beginning of the meeting. And so I thought I would just interject our our presentation, item six D, I believe, and have Superintendent Horn just give us a quick update.
Thank you. I'm sure everybody will be interested to know that we just got word from the federal government that they are going to revert, they're going to send us back at our request, six million of the money that Isaac had forfeited for not using it. And that'll that'll make three payrolls. So it's good news.
That is a great, thank you so much for that update. That's really good news. Thank you. With that, we're going to continue on our item. We're going to go to five D. This is a presentation discussion of educator recruitment and retention data trends and recommendations. So Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Item sixty is an actual annual item that the board will have moving forward. It will be an annual report on educator recruitment and retention done in conjunction with the Arizona Department of Education. We're very excited about this in that it is going to take a much more modern form to provide real time data for the board, the legislature, the field, especially because the board does have teacher recruitment and retention as its number one priority for the year. So with us today will be Jamie Wilber, who is the Deputy Associate Superintendent, the Arizona Department of Education, and she will eventually be joined by Jessica Mueller.
Good morning. President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Thanks for having me today. I'm going to give you a brief update. Sorry, thank you. I'm going to give you a brief update on various data points regarding recruitment and retention. And as as Director Ross said, Jessica is going to join me towards the end. Next slide, please. If you remember in August, my educator preparation specialist gave you a little bit of an update as regards to our educator pipeline. And if you look at this slide here, I want to just take you back and give you that the brief knowledge of how many educator preparation programs we have in the state at this time. So as of January 2025, we still have 156 traditional programs, 45 classroom-based programs and 45 alternative-based programs. Next slide, please. The reason why I am kind of taking you back to this particular piece is we know that things have to start in that area of educator preparation. And so over my units, what we do is we take a look at how many of our completers or those that are completing educator prep programs are getting their institutional recommendations and then following through to certification. And then are we actually seeing them show up in Arizona classrooms? So this is a quick snapshot of our educator preparation program pipeline, say that really fast. And this dashboard is currently being updated with some of our December graduates that are still to be put into this particular slide. You'll notice that we started collecting this data back in 2021. So you can toggle or filter on this dashboard and you're able to see all of our educator prep programs as well as take a look to see, are they getting their certification? And then again, are they showing up in Arizona classrooms? So I just wanted to kind of put that back in your mind as we had next generation workforce here earlier, kind of sharing with you data on what they're doing. One of the things that our educator preparation specialists are looking at are how how many how many of those students, those people that have just graduated with their certification of those students, those people that have just graduated with their certification, how many of them are actually showing up in Arizona classrooms? Next slide, please. Once we get them into the classroom, obviously, that next big piece is how do we keep them? And that's the conversation that we continually have over and over. And our unit has coined the phrase, retention is the new recruitment. And that is a huge piece for our, our specific unit in educator recruitment and retention. You can see here, this is, these are two snapshots for you back from 2022 and 2023 of our classroom teacher attrition and retention dashboards. And you'll notice that in 2022, we had 18.49% of our teaching population that left. And so all of this information is put into our teacher input application system, or TIA, and this is put in by our HR departments throughout the state. And what we do is we take a look to see how many of our teachers are showing up one year and then maybe are not showing up the next year in TIA, or maybe they have switched from LEA to LEA. So you can also see that on this, on these particular dashboards. In 2022, we lost 10,572 teachers. That means that they did not show up in the teacher input application system from one year to the next. And then in 2023, you'll notice that we had 8,910 that were the total that, that we lost from the profession or out of TIA, and that was a 15.79%. So you can see that it went down, and you're probably wondering, where are we now? So next slide, please. So this is hot off the press. We are getting ready to publish this dashboard with the updates for this specific school year. We have gone down just a slight bit in the area of attrition. You'll notice that it was that 15.79, and this year, we're sitting at about 15.24% of our teachers have dropped from TIA. Out of the 59,000 teachers that are in the classroom, from one year to the next, we lost 9,000 teachers this year. I want you to pay particular attention to the, the bar graph where it shows four years or less. So that is a huge number of teachers that we are continuing to lose in years zero through four. And that's something that the educator recruitment and retention team continues to focus on, is how do we make sure that that, that particular part of the graph is much smaller than the other parts? We know that it's really important that we are supporting our educators specifically in those first few years of their experience. Next slide, please. This is a six-year attrition rate slide for you so that you can see kind of overall where we started. You'll notice in 2019, we were sitting at about 14%, and then everybody from our vantage point kind of hunkered down during those years of COVID, not sure what was going to happen. And then after that, you'll see a pretty big spike. And hopefully, the goal is with all of the, the practices and trainings and support that our team is giving, and we're out there supporting the LEAs around the state of Arizona, that this attrition rate will continue to go down. Next slide, please. One of the things that we are often asked about in educator recruitment and retention is how, how are vacancies being covered? How many, how many vacancies are there? And so one of the things that my particular unit oversaw this last year was, we did an Arizona Teachers' Shortage Fall Impact Report, and we asked all of the LEAs in Arizona to please return to us a very short 14-question data collection. And we grouped the questions into three different categories. Just basic LEA information, what were their strategies for filling teacher vacancies, and then any other additional vacancy information that they could share with us. Out of the 449, we had 260 LEAs that returned the survey to us. Out of that, there were 158 public districts and 111 public charters. So what did they say, and how are they covering their vacancies? Next slide, please. So if you take a look at this, this graph, what this shows you would be how many students the district or charter served, as well as the FTEs that they were wanting to cover. And remember, this is back in August. So we did this at a very crucial point. It was right before the school year started, and we knew at this point, there had to be ways that they were covering their vacancies. You aren't going to just walk down a hallway and see a classroom full of students unattended by someone. So how are LEAs getting in there and making sure that classes are covered? And next slide, please. We took this information and are able to show it to you in this graph format. Long-term subs were accounting for about 40% of the vacancies at that moment in time, followed by six-fifths contracts, as well as contracted agencies and vendors. So we asked our LEAs to provide for us this information, any information that we could not already get from the TIA system, that teacher input application that everyone must fill out on an annual basis. So it was very telling for us to see how are LEAs being creative? What are they doing to be able to, to solve that teacher shortage piece and cover those vacancies? So we thought this was very interesting information. We wanted to make sure that we were sharing it with you. It was something that we talked about in August when we were here, but it wasn't quite finished. And so this is the, the total report, and it is also found on our educator recruitment and retention repository. Next slide, please.
Actually, Deputy Associate Superintendent Wilber, could you just explain what a six-fifth contract is for those who might not know?
Yes. So six-fifth contract would be, you're working through your prep, and you are holding a class or are covering a class during your prep time. So you're contracted for that time, so you don't have a prep period. Thank you. Additional certification information that is often asked of us is not only in the area of recruitment and retention, but in certification, how many substitutes do we have in classrooms this year? How many people are on an alternative teaching certificate this year? So we pulled these specific categories for you, just so that you could take a look to see what is currently in classrooms. So you'll notice in that first section, 53.1% of that 10,000 that we pulled are our substitutes, our emergency subs, and our emergency teaching certificates. Underneath that, we have our alternative teaching or our student teaching intern certs coming in at about 1,700. Those are people that are still in their educator prep program, and they are in the classroom while they are finishing up their, their education. Underneath that, we have our SMEs or our subject matter expert and our secondary STEM certificates. We often get questions about how many people are on a SME, that lovely little acronym there. And then finally, international teaching. That has been something that we've been asked about a lot. How many international teaching certificates are there in Arizona right now? And so right now, we're sitting at about 1,149. And I can tell you that Maricopa Unified School District has the largest number of international teachers in the, in the state at this point. And our educator recruitment and retention team is currently doing a case study, which we'll hopefully bring forward to you on that the next few months. Next slide, please. So again, this just shows that same information for you, just in another way, for you to be able to see that out of those 10,000 certificates that we polled, to take a look at what's currently in classrooms for this school year, what that makeup looks like beyond just that standard elementary, the standard, standard special education or standard secondary cert. And then next slide, please. And then finally, some additional information for you. Last spring, the educator recruitment and retention team surveyed those teachers that left teaching or were no longer showed up in the TIA system. And what we did is, it was a basic survey that asked them questions on everything from personal life factors to school factors to student performance factors. And out of the 8,000 that were targeted, we had 71% that opened the email from us, and 29% completed the survey. Not as high as we would like, but we will do this again for this year for those that did not show up in TIA. And what I wanted to share with you were the top five reasons why teachers are leaving. So not only do, does my team look at our completers to those that are ending up in the classroom, to then, how do we keep them in the classroom, but then those that are leaving, why are they leaving? And so we want to be very transparent about the work that the teams are doing. The full report of this is also found on the recruitment and retention repository, but we wanted to make sure that we highlighted those top five reasons for you. And then when we asked them to filter down by their top two reasons for leaving, the 24% of them said that they wanted or needed a higher salary, and then 22% said that they were burned out. So those were the top two out of that. So that is, next slide, please. That is kind of a very quick overview of where we are in the land of recruitment and retention from our educator prep programs all the way through teachers that are leaving. And I know, do you have any questions for me at this point before I turn it over to Jessica?
Any questions for colleagues?
Yeah.
Yeah, super quick question. I was intrigued by the contracted agency, 16%. Is, is that in overlap with the international? Are they, is it an agency that recruits international? Or is it separate and distinct from?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it, it is completely separate. So it might be where you have itinerant staff, or you might have special education that is being contract, that are being contracted by an outside agency that then comes in and then fulfills that vacancy.
Thanks.
Member Clark, and then?
Thank you.
Dr. Clay, then Member Myerson. Okay.
Thank you for the presentation. So helpful. Did, did the teachers, were they asked if they were staying in the teaching profession but choosing a different environment?
That's such a great question. Yes. So those that left from TIA that we found, what we did is we asked them, was this a reporting error on your LEA's part? So maybe something got input incorrectly, and maybe they really are still teaching. Did you retire? And so some of those people did retire. And then some of them did move into administration. So we had a little bit of everybody in that mix. One of the things that we'd like to do this year is when we provide that same survey, is those that are retiring or those that are moving into administration have a track of questioning about kind of the, the what and the why for those versus just leaving altogether.
Well, and you can see where I'm going with this based on my other questions is, are they leaving the teaching profession completely? Or are they choosing to go teach at a private school? Are they choosing to teach an online school that we don't track? Are they choosing to go to a micro school? Because I think that's a really important part
Absolutely.
of this whole picture. Because when I looked at the top five reasons, those are all school level issues that are directly related to students and leadership at like the school level. So I think that's really important. I was looking up some other numbers too. It's like, we have 2 million kids graduating from college every single year going into the workforce, and it's like, not just a recruitment issue, it's what's actually happening on the actual campus issue when it comes to retention.
Yes.
What are the numbers, if we have them, we may not right now, of, we've got a decline in the number of students that are in the public school system. And so do we anticipate that those declines or those projections of declines are going to meet in the middle with the teacher shortage, or what we're calling the teacher shortage piece? Because we are needing less teachers as we see less students because of birth rates and other issues.
Yeah. So President Haley, Member Clark, that's a great question. I wish I had the answer to that question for you. At this time, I do not. It's something that we obviously are going to be looking at and working with the state board, with Jessica, on some of our different pieces for recruitment and retention. So something definitely to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. And I bring it up because I forget about it too, that parents are making other choices, that we've got birth rate declines. And then what is the average teacher salary in Arizona right now? Salary is such a harped upon.
I want to say it's like 50?
I thought it was higher.
Was it higher than?
I thought it was 58. I'm just like clarity. Salary is an issue. And most people think, when I've seen surveys, when you ask people, what's the average teacher salary, they tend to think it's a lot lower than what it actually is. And so I think clarity around that for the sake of the public and others is really, really important.
I think the last piece of information that we filled out, I want to say, was for the Commission of the States. It was?
60?
NEA says 60.
NEA says 60. Okay.
Last thing we filled out was not that high. So.
Yeah, but that's not starting salary. The starting salary, I think, is like 44, 45.
Yeah. Yeah. I was just wondering about average teacher salaries. So 60. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, back to the list. I have Dr. Clay, Member Myerson, Superintendent Horn. So, oh, okay.
Thank you. So, so when I, when I talk to the legislature, I talk about how we have an emergency, and they've got to increase teacher salaries, because more teachers are leaving than are coming in. Could you underline that by giving us the net figure, when you subtract the number of teachers coming in from the number of teachers leaving, what's our net loss?
There we go. The last time we did that, I want to say, where we were, was we were sitting somewhere around, anywhere from 22 to 2,300 coming in, but then obviously, we're, we're losing. But that's, that also does not take into account whether we have out of state. So we're not tracking that when we're bringing in people from out of state. But I know that that was a conversation that we had last year.
Okay, and?
And we can get that.
And how many are leaving now at this point?
So right now, what I have is out of the 59,000 that were reported in TIA, 9,000 were not reported. But again, out of that 9,000, that's what we're going to find out in the next month or so when we do our survey. So we'll look to see how many of those have retired, how many of those have moved into a different avenue of teaching or of education.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, once we get that, we'll distribute that to the board members.
Absolutely.
So now, Dr. Clay.
Thank you. Thank you for your great briefing. I have a couple of questions. You had the chart where it said summary of vacancy coverage? And I wanted to know, were most of the long-term substitutes, were they covering core subjects?
That's such a great question. I don't have the answer to that question, only because when you take a look at the questions that we asked LEAs, we just asked them the questions that you can see up on the, the board there. So did they cover from a six-fifth contract? Did they cover from a long term? But what we could do is, we could dig in a little bit deeper to see exactly where are they covering? That would be additional questions that we could ask the LEA.
Thank you. Because looking across the landscape, I've noticed that a lot of those certificates or a lot of the teachers I've talked to, they were math and science teachers. And the math and science teachers, and you're talking about, oh my goodness, teaching the algebra II and geometry, et cetera, et cetera. And you have long-term subs, and God bless them, all right? But a lot of them are challenged because they haven't had the training on how students learn, you know, especially math, which is a very challenging subject. So I would like to know, with this right here, if, when you can, what core subjects? Because that is a reflection on everything that we're doing, you know, our proficiency scores, et cetera, et cetera. This is a big number.
Right.
So I'd like to know that. I'd like to thank your office for, for supporting us in Cochise County. We are working on retention and recruitment also, because when we lose one teacher, that's almost a closing of a school. Okay? And teachers are not staying in, in the profession. And I'm just going to go as far as saying, we have to stop villainizing our teachers. Okay, I'm going to say it. Okay, we have to stop villainizing them. And these legislators who are not even talking to the county superintendents or, or their peers about education, and they just go and vote, and they go make these rules, and they're not looking at any of the consequences behind it because they're just going with how they feel and what they think they see. We need a 360-degree view on education, period. Everybody has to be at the table, especially our legislators. So they need to start asking the right questions to the right people. Okay? And I'm going to challenge all of them. You need to start doing that, because we, we see the votes, but that's an after-effect thing. And we here, we're trying to do what's best, but it's going to take the whole educational system, ecosystem, to fix this. We cannot continue to do the same things and get different results. And I'm going to say about public education, let's stop destroying it and finding other ways, other options. and finding other ways, other options, and let's go ahead and find out how we can fix it so that some of these teachers will come back because they're not feeling respected. We are hurting their hearts. We are hurting them so bad. People don't get it yet. We need to do something different. And I thank your office for huddling with me and trying to figure this out. But we're gonna make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clay. Um, we now have Member Myerson.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of questions and a couple, I think, just to confirm what I heard based on Member Clark's question. Of the nine thousand teachers that left this year, I guess just confirming that includes people who just also retired, and people who moved into leadership. Do we know what the number is that like excludes that group?
That's a great question. I will in about a month and a half.
Okay.
Because that, that group is gonna be the group that we'll be surveying next.
Okay.
And so we'll see, is there anything that is maybe an error in reporting? How many of those people retired? How many moved into administration? Maybe how many moved into an instructional coach position?
Exactly. Like I can think of, I don't know, like ten teachers that we moved into like leadership roles, obviously that I just wanted to see. So great. So could we just make a note to have that number come back to the board in a month and a half?
As soon as that survey is done, we will make sure we get you the result.
That's great. And then I was also sort of curious on that being of, do we have then the number of people who, so if it's, if the majority, I think you said of that nine thousand or whatever excludes the retired group and moved into leadership roles, or of the folks that are four years or less? Do we know the number of, of teachers who stayed in the profession based on, on TIA who are also in that four years or less category? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we can definitely pull all of that for you as.
Cause I'd be curious like what that number is and also like, how are we surveying the people who are staying? To see what, like, are there trends in that data? Are they at particular schools? Are they, um, you know, getting an extra prep period every day? You know, what is the, what is a trend of the group that stayed?
And that's one of the things, um, in August, when the team presented, we talked about, um, the superintendent's task force and the recommendations. And one of the recommendations is a retention plan. So really truly having a retention plan that is comparable to a strategic plan, but has key strategic priority areas, but all centered around that area of retention, which would include induction with robust mentoring, which would include stay interviews, which would also include teacher voice. And so one of the things that the team does is not only present on the recommendations, but also kind of drill down to the specific recommendations that that task force came up with. And one of them very much is stay interviews. While that's kind of in something that was used previously, um, years ago, it's coming back around. So how do we use those the right way? And how do we follow up with them instead of just surveying educators and then never giving any kind of feedback on that? What are other ways that we can make sure that we're hearing their voice so we know why they're staying?
Yep. So I guess just to, so you'll come back to us with like those two numbers then?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, then I think my last question is, how, how frequently or how long do we have, so we're that sort of top five reasons as to why people left? How long have we been collecting that information?
So, um, uh, Member Myerson, that last year was the first year that my team, uh, did that survey. And so we're gonna do that survey again this year and then we'll start to see some trends from there.
Okay. Cause I think.
Yes.
You know, when I look at those reasons, I'm like, mhm.
Right.
And so, um, I think I, I'm, you know, I guess to like bring it even back to the K-three Literate Task Force where we tried to come up with recommendations around like things that not only we think would drive skin outcomes, but that we deeply believe would also support teacher retention. And so I would be curious if there's data. I mean, I love that we're collecting the data and I'm hugely supportive of the surveying. And I would bet you that that's the top five list for, I don't know, the last ten plus years. And so I sort of, as we all sort of maybe sit in kind of shock and awe over that, the idea that like we also have the power to do something about that and like how we're actually impacting those five. And so again, I sort of bring it back to the, the task force is potentially one opportunity. And I know we're gonna start a working group on that, which I'm, I'm really excited about. But I think there is so much opportunity for all of us to lean in to make sure that like, we know that. We, we know we've been surveyed to death.
Yep.
We've had more convenings on this topic than, than a lot of them. And we know what the problem is. And so, um, I'm excited for us as we think about this upcoming year of, of how we want to lean in to actually fix it.
Absolutely. We'll continue to bring you data.
Uh, Member Kat Neese.
Thank you, President Haley. Um, I guess going along with kind of, uh, Member Myerson's thoughts, based on the presentation we saw today even from Dean Basile, I don't know if it's possible to even look at like specific programs as well, uh, to see like if that retention is like higher or lower, whatever. I think because there could be some really innovative things that are happening in our state and kind of looking more specifically at those programs as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Member Kat Neese. One of the things that came out of the superintendent's task force recommendations, in that area of retention plans was varied staffing models. And so that was very loud and clear from the educators that were on that task force. And so we've put together, um, just a very brief overview of what varied staffing models are. And we do, um, mention the next generation workforce as well as, um, opportunity culture and NIT, some of the other things that are happening in the state.
Anybody else with a question? Any? Dr. Hagerman? Any? Nope. Awesome.
Turn it over to Jessica?
That'd be great. Sure.
It's your turn, Jessica.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Um, President Haley, Superintendent Horn and members of the board. Huge shout out to the work that they're doing at the Department of Education in this area. All of their teams are examining these questions that you're bringing. So what I bring to you today is this, uh, resource website of the Arizona Educator, uh, Workforce. What this is doing is allowing us to, uh, put in, uh, recommendations for data, recommendations for policy. And we can really build out this as a, it's a warehouse of information about the educator workforce. So as these pieces develop, as these questions that you're offering, I already see the question that Member Clark arose about median salary, adding that information so that, um, it's in a way that, uh, could be digestible for multiple audiences. And when we're thinking about, um, the local education agencies using this website, we're thinking about the, um, legislative members, uh, using this website. Um, and using it as, as really our, uh, our tool, our voice, uh, to spread what we're looking for. So it really begins with, um, an overview of some of the challenges that Arizona is facing with the educator workforce. What are the resources that the department has developed along with their, um, other stakeholders that they collaborate in this work with? And then we've got recommendations for the data. This is something that the governor's task force, when they presented to the board, uh, they identified a need for to understand, um, what is that data that we're missing right now? How do we get access to that data? And, um, what, when, uh, what tools can we bring to, um, the department in their relationships with other agencies about things like how the cost of living in different areas, like housing is affecting the teacher shortage and bridging some of those gaps? And so it begins with just that executive summary, uh, has information about the teacher input application, which is, they have a whole, whole guidance document that's about forty pages long. We just want to really, uh, all of the data that's coming from, uh, the Department of Education's area really relies on this system. And this system is, is costly to maintain and we want to, um, advocate for additional funding in the sense that we need, um, to expand things like position descriptions as we've seen with the presentation on next education workforce. The positions that teachers might be in might not match with their reporting in TIA. And we want to have the most accurate information about what's happening in Arizona schools. On our pathways to classrooms, we often think about our traditional and alternative, which includes the classroom-based programs. But also there's, you know, bridging those field and content expertise to education through CTE and subject matter experts. There's the, uh, Registered Apprenticeship Program, which is very new information. And so all this directs to the department of where they have, um, information to learn more about this. This is probably the newest aspect and, um, we'll see more information come out about that. As well as the teacher residency, which is a part of that Teachers Academy that we heard spoken about earlier. And then we, in the future, we'll see, uh, the live data be, uh, added us here as well. So the individual will be able to, uh, work within the data here on the website to examine different things like, um, cross-sections of the LEA, cross-sections of the content area on these different dashboards. So there's the one for the workforce demographics, uh, the attrition and retention. The surveys, as those develop, we'll have multiple years of survey data. We can think about that trends across the surveys and how we want to, uh, share information about that. And then we have, um, mentoring and induction. The board did vote in twenty-twenty-one on those, uh, induction program standards for new teachers. This is something that, uh, I don't, uh, getting that information out to the field is, is especially beneficial. And getting information about the toolkit as well about how to implement some of those things. The department has presented in, in August twenty-twenty-four on the first case study. And this is where we see this warehouse, uh, tool being built out more in the future. Is like Member Kat Neese addressed, um, more that what's happening and how we can learn a little bit more about these different models to work on retention. So this will be on our board's website and, um, we'll have that as a resource, uh, available. Any questions?
Any other questions for Jessica or comments? I look forward to finding this on the website. I was trying to find it, but it's on our, it's linked internally in our agenda, I think.
President Haley, uh, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, the site isn't quite live yet because they've got the embedded codes to the department's, um, uh, real-time, uh, data. That's, that's just, that's getting updated this week. But I just a huge shout out to Jessica and to Jamie. This is not something very common in most states. Arizona is kind of at the forefront of having everything in one place, uh, like this. And, and a big shout out to Jessica because originally the call for this was to be a report. And Jessica was like, I don't want to do a forty-page report that's gonna sit on a shelf. Let's do something interactive and useful. And that's why you hire brilliance. And so big, big thanks to Jessica for that.
Nicely done.
Yeah. Well done. Awesome. I think with that, I think folks are really excited and really appreciate the presentations. And I think with that, we will move on to item, um, six E. And Executive Director Ross, this will be a presentation discussion of the annual report on the performance of English language learners by the Arizona Department of Education.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. Each year, the department provides the board with an update on English language learners. With us today to present is Adela Santa Cruz, who is their Deputy Associate Superintendent.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Adela Santa Cruz and I am the Deputy Associate Superintendent in the Office of English Language Acquisition Services, better known as O. Wallace. I like to keep it short, O. Wallace. And the Migrant Education Program, both of these offices that I oversee are part of our Academic Achievement Division at ADE. Now, this morning, I am here, I'm very pleased to, uh, present to you the information regarding the, uh, the state, if you will, of language learning programs in the state of Arizona. And, um, before I start doing that, however, if you just give me about a minute, I would like to, um, introduce myself. Okay? As I said, my name is Adela Santa Cruz. I am the DAS, the Deputy Associate Superintendent. But many, many, many years ago, I won't say how many, but many years ago, I was brought to this country as a child of immigrant parents from Mexico where I was born. And at that time, I spoke only Spanish. That's my first language. It's a language that I love, by the way. English I learned as a second language. I learned English exclusively at the public schools that I attended. I worked very hard. I had some excellent teachers. Teachers were very, uh, very compassionate, very, uh, understanding of the fact that there were many children who did not speak English and were still obviously in, uh, in the schools. And so I learned and I learned very well, English. And, um, at the end of my schooling, I graduated, um, twelve years later, actually thirteen, because it took me a little bit longer. I had to repeat one of the grades. And, um, but I graduated as valedictorian of my class, valedictorian of the class of Nogales High School. That's where I am from. I was born, as I said, on the Mexican side, but I spent all of my life, my educational life on the American side. And, um, uh, after finishing school at, uh, in Nogales, in the public schools, I attended Arizona State University where I received my degree in education. And I have taught, for thirty-five years, I taught English language learners at the secondary level. I also hold a linguistics degree, a master's degree from Arizona State University. And so having taken that time to obviously spend the time giving back to the students that I felt that was given to me, I felt that, uh, it was necessary to do a little bit more. So I came in two thousand and six, I came and worked at the Arizona Department of Education for seven years. That was a long time ago, but I, that was my first time, um, as they say, at my first rodeo, if you will, at the ADE. At that time, we were in the process of developing the four-hour model of instruction for English language learners. I was very much a part of that. We actually, uh, went through the process of coming up with four hours of learning for our students that included all the domains of language, the reading, the writing, the speaking, the listening, the grammar, the vocabulary, everything that really forms the foundation of learning a language. It's a second language. You learn it from scratch. We wrote the proficiency standards at the time, those language proficiency standards that, uh, obviously were a part of the four-hour model. And then the AZELA, which is the assessment, the Arizona English Language Learner Assessment, was developed based on those models, on those standards at the time. We also, one of the other things that we did at the time was to spend a lot of time with professional training of teachers. We trained hundreds and hundreds of teachers all over Arizona on how to teach the four-hour model. How do we teach reading? How do we teach writing? How do we teach grammar especially? We had many, many teachers who were very much afraid of teaching grammar, possibly because they, they, it was not one of their portages, let's put it that way. Okay? And so we spent a lot of time teaching grammar. We spent a lot of time on all the domains of language. We were very successful during that time. In twenty-twelve, um, we had a reclassification rate of thirty-one percent. That was quite a bit higher than the four percent that had been part of the reclassification rate for bilingual education before I came, thirty-one percent in two thousand and twelve. That means that in about three years, a student would be reclassified. By reclassification, we're talking about moving into the mainstream, moving into those classes where they can truly be competitive, but having enough of a working knowledge of English to be able to do so. And so, uh, that was in twenty-twelve. In twenty-thirteen, I left the department. I went back to teach. I went back to teach middle school and high school. And I, I taught for four more years. In those four years, I used the four-hour model, again, of instruction. And quite honestly, in four years, I worked myself out of a job. I reclassified every student I had using the four-hour model. And so in twenty-seventeen, I, um, I went ahead and retired for a few years. In twenty-thirteen, in January, excuse me, in January of twenty-twenty-three, I returned to the ADE. I came out of retirement, wanting to help, again, do my part in working with folks who are prominent in helping English language learners, the teachers, the folks at the State Department. And that's why I'm here. Now, my first task when I returned was to make sure that I reorganized the, uh, Office of English Language Acquisition Services. I had worked for us a time before and there's no sense in redoing something that works. So I went ahead and divided that office into three areas. The area of monitoring, and I have a director who helps me with that area. The area of professional learning and technical assistance, I have a director who helps me with that area. And the area of, of, um, what we call, um, technical, not technical assistance, but program effectiveness. That was a new area. That was a title that was given to me when I first came to ADE my first time around. I was made, uh, obviously the Director of Program Effectiveness. I didn't really know what that meant. I asked, well, what do you need for me to do? Well, make sure that you are looking at not only compliance when it comes to making sure that the students are reclassifying, but taking them to the next step. And that is to making sure that they are ready for their academics. So it's not only language compliance, but academics. We want to make sure that those students are competitive with their non-EL peers. And that is the goal. That is the goal of, of our, uh, obviously our office and the work that we do with the teachers and with all the professionals, our constituents, if you will. So again, that's my background, so you know where I'm coming from. But my job today is to let you know how we're doing. Okay? What is the state, if you, if you will, the state of the state when it comes to English language learning and how our students are doing? So if I can have the next, uh, there we go. All right. Arizona revised statutes. Arizona by statutes require, all right, that we provide an annual report to you, the Board of Education, with the following pieces of information. I must give you, and I will give you, a detailed description of the adopted and approved by the State Board, your State Board of Education, our State Board of Education, the models of English language learner instruction, the ones that are current. I will also talk about the length of time that students are classified as English language learners. How long is it taking for those students to reclassify? I will also give you information, these are all statistics. This is all data that, that has been obviously put together for this presentation. The academic performance of the statewide assessment, which means that we look at our English language learners after they are reclassified, how are they doing? We want to make sure not only that they are reclassified, but we want to say, how are they doing in the mainstream now? We don't simply say, thank you very much and I'll never see you again. No, we want to make sure that they are doing well, that they are competitive, as I said before, with their non-EL peers. That's where they're going to get all of the opportunities that they are entitled to. And then finally, a summary of information that relates to the reclassification of how schools are doing and how districts are doing statewide. Okay, next please. All right, to begin with, the SEI, we have so many acronyms, I apologize, but I'll try not to use too many of them. The structured English immersion models of EL instruction, of English language instruction as adopted by this Board of Education in January of 2020 are the following. We have four models and you can see them on the left there. And those models each have to include what is called targeted instruction, which is the, which really the meat of the matter here. How do students learn language? It's the science of language, the reading, the writing, the speaking, the listening, the grammar, the vocabulary, or in linguistic terms, the phonology, morphology, syntax, all of those pieces that go into really basing and looking at forming a foundation for language. If we don't have a foundation, then it's very difficult to add to that learning. So obviously targeted instruction is what is included in the SEI model. And this is obviously an instruction that is offered, or should be delivered, I should say, by an SEI endorsed teacher. All right. In addition, in the targeted instruction model here, we have only English language learners. They are grouped only by other English language learners. In the pullout model, you have them for 60 minutes a day. That's 16 minutes that they receive targeted instruction in one day. Then you have integrated instruction, which is also part of the requirement of this SEI model. And that is that in the content area, we're not ignoring someone mentioned. Okay, I'm going to speed up. So I, okay, so we're not here till tomorrow's lunch hour. Thank you. Okay. So the only thing I'm going to say, in the integrated instruction, obviously, you have content area instruction that is scaffolded with language. We have a grouping of students that is both SE, the ELS and non-ELS. In the two hour, just like the term says, you have 120 minutes of targeted instruction and you have the rest of the day to do at least one hour. You have the newcomer, which is the 120 minutes, actually it's 120, 124 hours of English for students who are just new to the language. And then you have the 50/50 dual language immersion model, which is the, the model where students who are ELS receive 30 minutes of targeted instruction a day. And they receive at least 90 minutes of integrated. They have another hour in English and then half of the day, the rest of the day is in the target, what they call the target language or the language other than English. Thank you. Next, please. Okay, so the number of public schools, and I'll just let you look, look through these. I don't have to read these for you. The number of public schools this school year, 2425, implementing each one of the models, keeping in mind that you start with pullout, which is one hour, two hour, four hour, the, the 50/50, and then we have some schools that have bilingual education with waivers. And what I want to draw your attention to here is the last one, and that is the parent withdrawn. We have schools where parents or guardians of students who are actually, who qualify for instruction, for obviously they are English language learners and they qualify for instruction, instruction, English immersion, but their parents or guardians make the decision to not have them receive those services. They are withdrawn. They are put in the mainstream. Okay, next please. Then we have the number of students who are currently enrolled. In Arizona, we have approximately rounding it off about 100,000 ELLs. Of those 100,000, you can see how many are receiving one hour of instruction a day. That's about 89%. You can see that 21% are receiving two hours and then you can see for yourself the others there. Those numbers are again, based on about 100,000 students. There are also obviously students who are withdrawn, about 10,000. That means about 10% of our students who are ELS are withdrawn from services. And those are decisions made by the parents or the guardian. Okay, next please. Now, we also have a number of students who are ELS with disabilities. That means they have a language need and they also have a disability. So based on that information, we offer them the same kinds of obviously services that are afforded every other student. And you can see that over 13,000 students are in the one hour. And you can see the numbers there for yourself as well. And there are some parents who also decide, make that decision to withdraw them from services. They are still obviously special education students, they still have an IEP, but they are not receiving explicit instruction, like targeted instruction in English. And there's quite a few of those, so you can see for yourself the numbers there. Okay, next. Now, the average length of students who are classified as English language learners is about three years. That means that from the time they take that first AZELA to the time when they pass the AZELA and they're reclassified, it's taking them about three years. That's the average. It takes some students a lot longer and some are reclassified in one year. And that's what we would like to see, but the average is about three. Thank you. Next. Now, in terms of, I mentioned this before, how do our students do once they are reclassified? That's the ultimate goal. We want to see them do well. And so they have to take the achievement test, the AASA. And based on the math and the language, obviously results, you can see that the students who are reclassified, we have a cohort here, 2021 and 2122, one year out and two years out. You can see that they are doing very well in math and even better in language arts. You can see that obviously they are competitive. We are not releasing them from services too early, which is something that quite often I hear. We're not, we, according to these numbers, we are releasing them to be competitive with their non-EL peers. And those numbers bear that out. Okay, thank you. Next. Now, just very quickly, you can see from 2017 to 2024, the reclassification rate, which is the, the blue line, okay? And then you can see in red, the number of students that we had. And you can see the dip there in 2021. I just want to point out one thing. That was the time, obviously during COVID, okay, number one. And number two, that was the time when the new structured English immersion models were in full implementation, when the change came. Okay, thank you. Next. Now, in terms of the EL levels at the end of the school year, and this, this slide is very important because when students take the AZELA, obviously at the end of the year, we hope to see that they are moving towards proficiency. And you can see that the pre-emergent, emergent students who took the AZELA, 32,000 of them remained pre-emergent, emergent. That's at the lowest level of proficiency. They didn't move. They didn't go anywhere. And there were, again, about a third of our students did not move. Okay, that's very important to note that. You can see the other numbers there. The ALTAALPA is the alternate ELP assessment that we have for special education students. We gave approximately 1,200 of those last year. We administered about 1,200 of those last year. And you can see the results there. And there were some good numbers there as well. Okay, next. So based on that, I have a recommendation I would like to make. I know that the statutes are what they are. And one of the recommendations I'm going to make is that when we look at that level at the end of the year, the AZELA, the 32,000 students who didn't move a bit, the majority of those students were in, obviously in classes where they were receiving targeted instruction, one hour a day. It is very difficult to move for, for students who are basic, at the lowest level of proficiency. It's very difficult for them to move very fast if they're only receiving one hour of instructional English a day. That means the reading, the writing, the speaking, the listening, the grammar, the vocabulary. That's all it gives, one hour a day. My recommendation is that districts, obviously, I don't have the, unfortunately, the power to do that, but I can certainly make some recommendations based on these numbers. And these numbers are solid. I can certainly recommend that those students receive at least two hours a day. That, that the LEAs look very carefully and become very focused on looking at those students and looking at the results of the AZELA, those that they get before the beginning of a school year. That they look at those and if they have a good number of students who are at the beginning level, the pre-emergent, emergent level, that they offer into their schedule, two hours of English for those students so they can move. Because it's very difficult and the numbers bear it out. It's very difficult for them to move if they only have one hour of English a day. These are students who are at the lowest level. They may even be, again, newcomers, right? Many of them probably are because they don't have that understanding of the language. And therefore, in one, in one hour a day and then moving into their other classes, which are content classes, it's very difficult for them to take what they have learned and apply it. So that is my recommendation and I appreciate you listening to me. Appreciate you listening to my story too, so you can understand where I'm coming from and based on letting you know that it is the best recommendation I can make at this point. But I want, we want, our office wants all of our students to become proficient as quickly as possible, that they may have a good working knowledge of English. They don't have to be masters of the language, but they have to have a good work, working knowledge so they can be competitive with their non-EL peers in the mainstream. That's where we want to see them. And there they can take on any languages they want to learn, anything else that they want to learn, because now they have a good working knowledge of English.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's very thorough. I, I know I personally have some questions. So if anybody has some questions, let's go with Dr. Clay, then Dr. Clark, I promoted you. Dr. Clay, then Member Clark, and then Member Kevikis, and we'll go from there.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very informative. My question is, do you know the reason why parents are withdrawing from receiving, having their students receive instruction?
There's a whole myriad of answers to that, honestly. There are parents who have told us that they believe that in the mainstream, they will learn faster, one thing they've said. There are parents who have gone through the four hour model. This is very honest, very honest, what I hear. They've gone through the four hour model themselves when they were younger. And now they, they don't want their children to be separated from the rest of the students. The fact of the matter is there's a misconception there because it's only one hour. Okay, ELS are in the one hour targeted instruction, they're only separated from the other students one hour. In the two hour maximum, two hours. The rest of the time, they are in with the other students. And so there's a whole lot of questions, a whole lot of questions that we have, very few answers, I'm sorry to say.
In the future, can we find that out? That is a very gray area and to fix any problem, we need a 360 degree view on the issue. So I would really like to know why. Thank you very much.
No, I, I will certainly look, look to our PAL meetings that we have during the year because we have a lot of constituents come to those, so we will try to get those answers for you.
Thank you. If we can get the data, I mean, our data on this, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Member Clark.
I'll be quick, I'll be quick. Thank you for your presentation. Both of my in-laws are actually bilingual, former Arizona public school teachers. And my husband is bilingual and actually used to teach ELL way back in the day. So I have lots of interesting thoughts and stories to hear from them. Of course, that was a long time ago. And so my question is, your recommendation, I think, is very sound about having, you know, additional time for these students. But what we have now, which my in-laws didn't have, you know, 10 plus years ago, is the benefit of all these incredible online programs, even AI, AI tutors and all these different things. Has there been any investigation into requiring that or even just offering it for those English language learners, possibly even for the English language learners whose parents opt them out?
Okay, thank you for your question. The, the, the whole issue is, is pretty complex because we are going into a time period when AI is very much a part of what we're considering as tutors. Okay, that's very much a part of one of our initiatives at the state. We are looking at obviously those kinds of, those kinds of schedules that we could offer, or at least offer some guidance to the districts that they could rework so that those students would have more time to obviously, to receive that English. And so there, we're looking, we're looking because we know that it's not stagnant. We, we're not doing English the way we used to do it many, many years ago. And the sooner, the whole, again, I keep saying, the sooner we can get those students out, the better.
Thanks, Member Clark, Member Kevikis.
Hi, Adela, it's nice to see you again.
I know, I was here many, many, many years ago.
Yeah, our paths definitely crossed over the years. Well, these great ladies stole two of my questions, but I'm going to go ahead and I love the fact that you mentioned that you needed that extra time. Cause that was something that came up a long time ago, even when we were debating this at the legislature, is how much time does it take? If passing the state exam is the goal, which it is by definition of our own state policies. And I wonder how, how we might think about what policies are disincentivizing. You know, even the calculation of the grad rate. It's disincentivizing kids from, or schools from being able to actually provide that extra time. So I just want to throw that out there as something to think about. Because the incentive is to graduate in four years at a certain age. And it's kind of an American expectation, so I don't want to discount that. But I think it's something really important to think about if our goal is for these students to pass the state exam, which it is.
Which it is. And I think you have a very good point there because we want them, as I said before, we want them to be obviously out of structural immersion, but we want them to be prepared. So it means something, so that they're ready to take on the, the mainstream. So obviously, we have to look at what's going, what, what are we doing? What are we doing to make sure that everything points in a positive way in that direction? To, to make sure it's a, it's a, again, you say, it's incentive to, to make sure that they are getting into the mainstream.
Thank you. My second thing is more of an observation, so I'll leave it to you of how you might want to address it. But it actually hearkens back to one of the public comments that we had in the earlier part of the meeting was the gentleman speaking about his student who was an English language learner and on the autism spectrum. We know both of those numbers are increasing as a state. And how are we, I mean, it boggles my mind, lowering the complexity of identifying ELLs general? When you throw a speech language impairment on top of that or an autism diagnosis, all of these different things on top of that, how are we working to support and address that issue?
One of the things that I'm very proud of having come back after being gone a few years is that we are now looking very, very carefully and very focused on dual labeled ELS. Those are the students who obviously need language, but they have obviously a special need. They have an IEP. And we have, we have professionals in the area of special education who are working very closely with EL specialists as well, obviously. And I didn't see that as much, obviously, because when I was here before, we could take, we could simply say, the students do not need services simply because they're special ed. Okay, that went away in 2019. And so now we have to look at the special needs. We have to look at those students who have IEPs. What does their IEP say, basically? We take that in consideration. And based on that and based on a language need that has been obviously a part of the AZELA that they took, or the ALTAALPA, whichever they, they took. Obviously, how are we bringing those two together? And we bring the professionals who make the best decisions for those students. And that is something that I'm, I'm very happy to see because that has been a big change and it's very much a positive in the direction that you're talking about. And we do have, we have needs that are a challenge, let's put it that way.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that answer. One clarification, ALTAALPA is just for the 1% significantly cognitively.
Correct, correct. And that one has to be applied for.
Wonderful. Do we have, Dr. Hagerman, do you have a question? Okay, I just have a quick question. One, looking at slides nine and 11, where we have the data of student performance and sort of whether or not individuals are reclassified by math and ELA. Are you able to provide us more detailed information based on the four different categories of programs that students participate in?
Those who have been reclassified and now are in the first year and second year.
Yeah, that have, which programs they participated in, whether it was the pullout, two hour newcomer, 50/50 dual language.
And where they were. I'm not sure, but I will check. If, if we do have it, it would be with our accountability division.
That might be really interesting because there's been quite a bit of conversation about the four. about the four different models that the board has approved and being able to understand where individuals, what types of programs they've participated in and, and how, whether or not it's effective, any of the programs.
Sure, and that makes sense because obviously we need to know how much time they were given. And when it comes to learning language or learning anything, time is of the essence.
Right.
And, and so I will, I will check with our accountability if that's possible.
That's great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
With that, I think we'll move on to item 6F. This is a presentation discussion, the process for developing the Empowerment Scholarship Account Handbook for 2025. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. As you know, the board is charged with approving the ESA family handbook by May 1st of each year. So as we have done the past couple of years, we've asked John Ward from ADE to come and speak about the handbook development process and to provide the board with some updates. So, John?
Executive Director Ross, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, President Haley, Vice President Hagerman, Superintendent Horn. So when Sean first invited me, we thought there might be some new members on the board as well. So I will give just a brief kind of overview of some of the things happening in ESA before I get to the handbook discussion. And so I'll hit a few kind of refresher points and then I'll talk about some of the key stats, I think, that indicate kind of where the program is operating right now, as well as some key program changes that we have recently made, as well as some really key initiatives that are, that are right on the horizon. Next slide, please. So just as a refresher, if you all recall, Arizona was the very first state to adopt an ESA program in 2011 when Governor Brewer signed this into law. At that time, it was just for a narrow group of students. It was for students who had a disability and had spent 100 days in public school. And then over the next four years, that initial eligibility group began to expand. And so students who were attending a D or F-rated school were added to eligibility, students in foster care and who had been adopted, military and so on, as you see in the slide. And it ultimately culminated in 2022 with universal expansion so that essentially all students who met two requirements, and I'll talk about those in a minute, were eligible to be on the program. And so not only was Arizona the first state to have an ESA program, we were also the very first state to have universal, a, a universal ESA program. And so for that reason, Arizona really is kind of the national leader in the ESA movement. And I hope to, to keep us there with some of the initiatives that we're working on. Next slide, please. Quick refresher in terms of who can participate now that we have a universal eligibility program. It's simple. A student has to meet two criteria. They have to reside in Arizona and they have to be eligible to enroll in an Arizona public school. Those students who are eligible to be in the program will get 90% of what they would have received had they went to their local public district school. And they can spend that, that 90% from the state funds on things like tutoring, tuition, curriculum, supplementary materials, therapy, evaluation, and a whole host of other things that are included in state law. One of the, the things that I do want to clarify is that often the media and others will refer to the ESA program as a voucher program, but it's not. And in fact, in 2009, the state Supreme Court struck down Arizona's voucher program. And so this is not, that was in Kane versus Horn. This is not a voucher program. In voucher programs, the state transfers money directly to private schools, including religious private schools. That's not the case here. In our program, these are award scholarships in which money moves from the state into a digital wallet for each of these students and their parents to then decide how they're going to use those monies. And it's often well beyond just paying tuition at a private school, which is typically how a voucher program works. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Next slide, please. So moving on to just some of the key statistics of our program as it stands today. Keep in mind that before universal expansion, at the very end of September of 2022, there were about 12,100 students on the program. 27 months later, we have over 85,000 students on the program. In fact, I checked the number today right before I came to this meeting. We're at 85,200 students on the program. That is 600% growth in that short time period. That is incredible growth, the type of growth that can often overwhelm a system. But we continue to, the ESA team and I continue to try to use our resources as effectively as possible to continue to grow this program and ensure that it is serving the needs of all of our ESA families. In terms of the students who are on the program, almost three-quarters are in the program under universal eligibility. Another 18% are on the program as a student with a disability. And the other 8% is a combination of all the other nine category, eligibility categories that are in state law. Next slide, please. In terms of the money that we are awarding in this program, shortly after January 1, when I approved dispersment of quarter-three funding, I approved dispersment of $215 million, which on an annualized basis is $860 million. So we are well on our way to becoming a billion-dollar program. And in fact, at this size, the ESA program is the single largest program that is operated by the Department of Education. In fact, when you combine all of the federal programs that the department oversees, their spending and what they disperse is about $100 million less than what the ESA program disperses. In terms of the average award that our students on the program are getting, if they are a universal student, which is again, almost three-quarters of our students, they're getting on average a little over $7,300. And if they are a student with a disability, they're getting $24,476. Next slide, please. Now, to discuss the sheer volume of kind of what the ESA staff kind of works on a daily and weekly basis, I wanted to give the most recent numbers from our, from the completed Q2. So in Q2 alone, we had 439,000 orders moved through our ESA program. 5,430 applications were submitted to us and our call center team took in 16,450 phone calls. So on an annualized basis, we are 1.76 million orders. And many of the orders, if not most, that come in have multiple items on it. So we are well north of 2 million items coming in for our team to review on an annual basis. And also on an annualized basis, we're getting almost 66,000 calls at our current volume annually. And, and we do all of that with a, a, a small staff. So we are budgeted for 42 employees. So currently, we have nine frontline enrollment employees who are dealing with those 5,430 applications just in Q2. We have 10 employees who are dealing with these over 2 million orders annually. And we have 10 employees that are taking in these almost 66,000 calls annually. And there's another five employees, myself, the deputy director, my assistant, a vendor liaison and a, an accountability liaison that we also have on staff. And then we have some, some vacancies that we're working really hard to fill as well. Next slide, please. So just to put our resources in context and what we're doing with those resources in the, in the ESA program, ADE spends about $4.5 million to operate the ESA program annually. So that is one-half of 1% of the dollars that we disperse annually. This is a very serious resource constraint. When we look, so we're spending about $53 per student to operate this program. When you look at public schools, just for their administrative, administrative piece, they spend about $1,200 per student to operate their education programs. Similarly, when you, when we look at the federal programs that the department oversees, those programs get anywhere from 2.5% to 5% of an administrative allowance to operate their programs. So our one-half of 1% is a very, very small percentage to operate a program of this size. And I'll show you one more slide that speaks to this point. Next slide, please. So there are currently about 18 states in the country that have some version of an ESA program. 13 of those 18 have either in state law or in administrative rule, the administrative allowance percentage that they will get to operate their programs. So I included this graphic here just to show those 13 states that have it on the books. So as you move to the right on the x-axis, their administrative allowance goes up. So it ranges, excluding Arizona, it ranges from 2% all the way up to 10% in New Hampshire. So again, the closest second is, you know, four times bigger than what we are at, at this point in terms of operating this program. And again, because we, we want to remain as the national leader in ESA. And so we, we are working our very best. We, I have an incredible ESA team that works really hard to deliver despite some of these resource constraints that we face on a daily basis. Next slide, please. Because of the massive volume that was coming through our program, it was, it was causing a problem. So we had these very, very long review and approval times. So it was a combination of volume that was, that was causing this problem. There were additional requirements from the Attorney General's Office to require curriculum for things that were previously considered very standard educational expenses. Last legislative session, a law was passed to allow everything that is allowable in the ESA program to come through as a reimbursement, and that is more time-consuming to review. So that combination of things kind of resulted in these really, really long review and approval times. And, and the effect was that we had, and I'm sure you all heard it, we had really frustrated parents on the ESA program. And we had also some really frustrated vendors who felt like they weren't getting paid quickly enough because our staff couldn't review all of these purchases prospectively. And so, and at this point in time, you know, we were reviewing everything that was coming through. Because of this problem, you know, we have decided with the, the recommendation of the Handbook Committee that I'll speak about in a moment, they recommended that we implement, and we supported this decision, a risk-based audit approach. And so currently, any purchase that comes in under $2,000 kind of is automatically approved until it is audited on a risk basis. Everything above that $2,000 threshold, the ESA team is still prospectively reviewing before it is approved. And so, you know, the benefits that, that we're seeing already and our families are expressing to us is the fact that the approval times have been reduced dramatically. So now, you know, 95% of, of what is submitted is under $2,000. So we are in real time always caught up with where things are at. And then during that time, we are performing audits. And so this is, this risk-based approach is allowing us to focuses, to focus on those purchases that are most likely to not be allowable under this program. Next slide, please. In terms of what our priorities are looking forward, at least from now until the end of the fiscal year, one of the big things that we are spending a lot of time on and we really need to get this right and completed soon is an annual residency verification. So we always verify residency for eligibility when a student comes on the program. But after last legislative session, there was a new requirement or is a new requirement that we verify residency every single year for students who are renewing to remain on the program. And so with over 85,000 students on the program, by the end of the year, we might have, you know, anywhere, somewhere in the neighborhood of 90,000 students on the program. This is a huge thing. So we are currently meeting with vendors who are on state contract. And I hope in the next several weeks, we will be choosing one of those vendors who will assist us in this annual residency verification because the, the staff that we have, the, the nine employees who are enrollment staff, would not be able to annually verify 90,000 students on a program. And so we're really looking forward to this process improvement. The other huge thing that we're working on is the implementation of artificial intelligence with regard to our purchase review and our audit process. So we are working with our Class Wallet financial vendor. And they've been a fantastic partner with us. To be able to, as purchases and orders are coming in, each one of those items will be fed through a decision engine and using machine learning. And all of the rules that we have in state law, all of the rules that we have in our handbook and all precedent that has been set, those items will be evaluated against those rules. And the system will automatically generate for us through the platform, a confidence score. And so every time, you know, someone submits something, it'll say, there is a 95% chance this is allowable based on Arizona's rules. Or there is only a 75% chance that this meets the criteria of Arizona law or the handbook, at which point, you know, wherever, we haven't set the thresholds yet. But once we set those thresholds, anything that comes in below would then be ripe for auditing. And so this will really help us to identify which purchases should be audited and which should just be moved on and not looked at. Okay, now moving on to where we're at with the handbook because I, I know that probably, probably all of you have flashbacks from the previous years with how rowdy things get when the handbook is, is in front of this board. I just want to be clear about what the criteria is for development of the handbook. So under State Board Rule R 7-21503, Section 1, it says, "The department shall on or before March 1st of each year, provide the board with a handbook developed in consultation with parents of children on the program that includes information relating to policies and processes of ESAs and complies with Arizona state law." And so, so we've done that and I'll walk you through how we've done that. Just to kind of, just further develop this timeframe. So March 1 is when the ESA program must have a handbook to all of you. May 1st is the date in State Board Rule for all of you to adopt that handbook. And in state law, I guess the drop dead deadline is July 1 to have a handbook developed. Next slide, please. So the way that we have consulted with parents this year is different from the way that we've done it in the past. If you recall, in last, during last March's State Board meeting, Superintendent Horn had indicated that we would be putting together a ESA parent handbook committee to take a close look and to revise the handbook as necessary. So that's exactly what we did. So we chose an experienced group of ESA parents who had initially applied to be on our parent advisory committee. So we got hundreds of parents who wanted to be on our PAC. And so we asked a whole variety of questions that we could gauge kind of who would be a really good fit for a parent handbook committee. And so as my management team and I kind of went through the hundreds of folks, parents, who had indicated an interest in being part of this PAC, we were looking at a few criteria in, in making a judgment on whether we thought they would be a, a good member of on whether we thought they would be a good member of this committee. And so one was, did they have prior committee experience? We know how important that is when you're trying to be really efficient and get things done. So that was one of our top criteria. We wanted to ensure that we had a really good cross-section of students on the ESA program. So we ensured that we reached out to parents who kind of spanned all of the eligibility categories for their students. We also wanted to ensure that we had families represented on the committee who were in different types of learning environments. So those who attended a brick and mortar private school, those who are attending microschools, those who are being homeschooled. And this one was really tough geographic location. We didn't want a committee just made up of parents here in the Phoenix area or Maricopa County. So we did our best to reach out to families across the state. And we weren't as, as successful in that as we had wanted to be, but we still had a couple of folks down from Pima County and one out from Pinell County. So, you know, 30% isn't bad for a, a committee that had 10 members. And we chose a facilitator who would kind of impartially ensure that the goals and the objectives of this committee were accomplished in a very, very efficient manner. So we chose Janelle Wood, who was a very kind of critical and key player when Governor Ducey was shooting for universal expansion. She runs a group called the Black Mothers Forum and helped to start a network of microschools that serve students in the inner city. And so she is just a really strong, articulate, incredibly bright education advocate. So we were really just lucky to have her serving this role for us. She really just did a fantastic job. And I'll mention about the committee. So there were 10 members and they were just, I, I, we could not have asked for a better group of people. Very dedicated, very focused, very smart, very positive and productive. In fact, I've almost never seen a group of 10 people work together so well. And I think a lot of that credit goes to Janelle Wood for kind of, you know, channeling their energy in such a positive way. But just to give you a quick breakdown, so three of the parents of the 10 had students who had a disability. Seven parents were parents of universal students. One of the parents was a private school operator. One was a private school administrator. Two were homeschool parents. Two were public school teachers who had their students on the ESA program. And we also had one microschool operator. So we had folks who had been part of this program for some time and had a really strong understanding of how the program works. Next slide. So here were the committee's objectives. It was to review the current ESA parent handbook and to determine if there were ways that they, they could improve it. They use it all the time, what could they do to make it better? And their final product was, is going to be a set of recommendations that will be incorporated into the draft that we will present to you. So if we, you know, by March 1, and they did this, they met five times between October and December. They started off meeting half-days and then they finished off by having full-day meetings so that they could, they could accomplish this goal. So they broke into teams within that, that overall group of 10. And each team kind of took a chapter. They would come back to the entire group and really talk it through until there was generally kind of unanimity on where things stood. So it was just a really positive experience, I think, for them. Myself and some of the ESA managers, we didn't attend all of the meetings for the entire time. We were called in sometimes to be technical advisors to the committee or if they wanted clarification on things. But being a fly on the wall for a portion of those meetings was really just something impressive to see. Next slide. So there were three areas that I think the committee most focused on. And so one was including information on eligibility and the application process. Typically, we've, we've never had that in the ESA parent handbook in the past because this was for parents on the program. So if you're on the program, you're kind of past the eligibility and application stage. But one of the members brought up a very good point. If you have large families, you know, and you have four, you know, three kids who are currently on the program and you haven't had one come on in the last few years, it might be helpful to kind of know what the eligibility and application process looks like because things are changing, it's a very fluid environment. And for those families who've never been on the ESA program, they're looking for any resource they can find out there and they will often track down the handbook and they want to find good information about the program there as well. So we've added that, they're adding that. They are taking a hard look at all of the allowable and unallowable goods and services that were included in the handbook. And they also thought that the handbook could, could do a better job presenting information in a more user-friendly way. Let me be very clear that the, the handbook committee's work is not yet done. And so we will have that done so that we have a draft for you all by March 1, but it's still a work in process. Next slide. So that concludes my presentation. I'm more than happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Fantastic. I, I do have a really quick question, then I'm happy to open it up. But my first question is, in the past, we had, or a quest of the board has parent feedback. Is, in the preparation of providing us a draft of the handbook, will you all be sharing this widely, getting feedback before the March 1 deadline? Is that, going back to my first board meeting in March of 2022, it was a very long meeting, so it'd be great to have an answer for that.
Right, so we, we will have the handbook, that I'm hoping by mid-February. So that's, that's what we're shooting for, so that we can have it either by that time or definitely no later than the first. That gives us two months before you all have to adopt it. And we were hoping that during that time period is when it would be open for public review.
Do you think in that process, I just remember the back and forth conversations in 2022, and then again in 2023, there was like, how are you engaging parents? Are they going to be open forums, Zooms, et cetera? I hope that the department will kind of engage lots of avenues because I remember that those conversations in 21, or 2022 and 2023 were quite robust.
Right, I recall them as well.
I'm trying to help you, Mr. Ward.
No, I, I appreciate that. So as we look at State Board Rule, what I had, you know, what I had up a few slides earlier, it says we consult with the parents. There's obviously different ways that we can do that. And so this parent handbook committee that the superintendent talked about for the first time last March was the way that we decided to engage parents this time. You know, I think there were some benefits of doing it this way compared to, I think, the survey approach that, that we've done in the past. One is that it was a very orderly process. It was a highly efficient process. It was very positive and very productive. And so it was very solutions oriented. I, you know, I think based on the survey approach and the way it appeared to go down in the past, it was more conflict over solutions. It also was incredibly time consuming because for, when you have 85,000 kids on the program for a staff that is really strapped to just operate the program on a daily basis, going through thousands of responses to try to call kind of what are those common themes, I think we were able to achieve by having this really dedicated cross-section of families at the table for probably 15 to 20 hours, hammering out a handbook.
Okay. I think engaging the public and engaging our ESA families would be prudent just as we get ready to review the handbook in March and then again finalize it.
Right. President Haley, so I'm assuming, you know, once we get this to you at the beginning of March during your, so as soon as Executive Director Ross, I guess, posts that, by the March meeting, I'm assuming during the call to the public, there will be lots of feedback that, that we will get in ADE.
Yeah, certainly, we'll probably get quite a bit of feedback during our meeting, but I think it would be prudent for the department also to engage with families, not just through posting it on the website in anticipation of our March board meeting. I also had one other question in our 2022 meeting, and then our, I believe there was some discussion, staff, Kat Ruiz on our team. She did a red line handbook. Will we be able to get a red line handbook given the number of substantive changes?
Absolutely, so we'll be sending over two drafts to Executive Director Ross. It'll be the red line version and the final version.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Anybody else has questions? I just had my like process question, so anybody else? Dr. Clay, and then Dr. Court.
Thank you for very, very informative briefing. I have two questions. One was, how were, how was the committee, the parent handbook committee selected? That was number one. And I'd like to know who they were and where they came from. And of course, you know the reason why I'm asking. I'm going to be looking for families down south. So those are the two questions.
President Haley, Dr. Clay, so again, we, we chose...
We chose the members of the handbook committee based on those parents who had applied to be on our parent advisory committee. And there was just kind of all those criteria, like, had you been on a committee before? What eligibility category does your student fall into? What's the learning environment? And then the geographic piece as well. And, and so it took a lot of work because, you know, we, we come up with a list of, you know, like 25 parents and you call them up and you have a discussion. And some can do it, some cannot. And so, but it worked out really well, the 10 who were able to do that.
So when you give us the list of the committee members, it's going, it's not going to be in one general area, right? You're going to have some in the four corners of Arizona. They're not going to be, you know, in Phoenix and Maricopa. They're going to be, you know, maybe Cochise, Grand Brilly, in any of those counties. We're going to have some, a spread, please, think.
President Haley, Dr. Clay, so the, of the 10 members who ended up on the committee, only three were from outside of kind of Maricopa County. So two from, from Pima County, both from Tucson, and one from Pinell County. So, and we did reach out to those rural counties. One of the things that I think also kind of made it a little tougher is we wanted to have these meetings in person. But we made it very clear that we would be paying for their travel fees and all of those things. And we got national ESA groups to sponsor lunch for all of those meetings so that we can treat them well. But it was just really, really tough to do that.
I understand, especially with me, I'm, I'm a three and a half hour drive, seven, seven hours both ways just to get these meetings, okay? And I have to go to a hotel the night before. So I do understand that. In the future, next year, could you please let me and some of my peers, the county superintendents, help you out in promoting, doing a promotion about the committee, you know, really saying, listen, guys, we need everybody's opinion on this, in your opinion counts. So I really want the help promoting your committee so that we can get a good 360-degree view on what's going on. But thank you so much for everything that you do.
Dr. Clay, thank you for those comments.
Dr. Court.
Thank you for that great presentation. The challenge of getting representation, obviously, from Yuma County is when you live in Yuma County, you don't ever want to leave Yuma County. Because it is, in fact, the sunniest place on earth.
I called three people down there, it was a no from all of them.
So that's, that's just a shout out to, to, to Yuma. I, I would like to follow up on, on President Haley's process request. I kind of heard it as a request and would like to echo that. Having sat through, you know, a lot of feedback in previous years, let's not look at it as a, let's do this or that. I know you're short-staffed and you guys are doing amazing work. Let's try to do this and that to the degree possible. This is a, you know, this is a high-interest issue. And, and let's, let's get it right the first time and have folks feeling good about process at a very, at a very minimum. So I guess I'm, I'm echoing President Haley's remarks. Also with process, red line version to the board electronically at some point before March 1. But then you'll come back and walk us through some of this in a, in a, in a meeting before we're asked to approve it sometime before May. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, cool, thank you.
And so my preference would be, so President Haley, Dr. Court, our preference would be that Janelle Wood, who was the handbook facilitator, might actually present the handbook during that meeting.
All right, Member Clay.
I'll, I'll be so fast, you guys will be so proud of me because you answered, you guys asked all great questions. Thank you, Director Ward, for your presentation. And I think regardless of the fact that we're all still here and you didn't know if we were all going to still be here today, the introduction to the presentation is just so good. It's so good for us to be reminded as a board and for the public to be reminded of how big the program is, how high in demand it is for Arizona families, how much application, how many applications you're processing, how many transactions are going through. And don't kill me for saying it, but I'm excited to see that number grow over to 100,000. And I hope that the staff issues, we can get sorted before then. Did you have a comment on that?
I hope so too.
Okay, and I, I just want to say publicly and also to thank Superintendent Horn, one, for your work with the handbook committee, committee and risk-based auditing. Two, for hiring Director Ward, because I will say, having been on this program quite some time, having been on the board for a couple of years, we have the best relationship as stakeholders and as parents that we have ever had with the department specifically because of Director Ward. And I will say that we all know it's not perfect. I am the first person to find problems and nitpick, and I try to be really careful. But Director Ward has handled that and the ESA parent feedback with a very positive attitude towards the ultimate people that this program is here to serve, which is families and these students. So we are just so incredibly grateful. And I'm grateful I had the opportunity to, to offer this praise publicly, so thank you.
Member Clark, thank you. Very kind of you.
Awesome, well, thank you so much, Director Ward. We're really grateful for your presentation and look forward to the rest of the spring. So, and congratulations on managing 85,000 students on a very small budget.
And actually, I want to give a shout out. This is National School Choice Week, and so there were a whole group of students on the ESA program and their families who are at the Capitol today, so a shout out to all of them.
Well, thanks for your role. Great, and moving on to item number 6G. Presentation, discussion, possible action to close rulemaking procedures for AAC R 7-2-1307, R 7-2-1309, R 7-2-704, and educator discipline. Executive Director Ross, or is it Deputy Director DePlante?
Thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. This is, you opened this rule earlier last, last year. It's been open for quite some time. We had a public hearing on October 9th. Been working with stakeholders to refine the language. Just as a brief reminder, this aligns rule to Language Senate Bill 17, or 1560, includes technical changes to allow efficient disciplinary process, updates the list of offenses that require educator revocation on issuance, non-renewal of certification ordered to conform with statutory changes as well as the recommendation of the Attorney General's Office. And additionally, this provides criteria for discipline cases in which there's evidence to allow the board to take an alternative actions under R 7-2-1307. With that, staff and I stand ready to answer questions.
Fantastic. Any questions from members of the board? Seeing that there are none, do I have a motion that the State Board of Education open, right? Oh, no, do I have a motion that State Board of Education adopt the draft proposed, goodness, rule and close rulemaking procedures for AAC R 7-2-1307, R 7-2-1309, and R 7-2-704?
So moved.
A member, Clark, made the first, and Member Meyerson, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Great. Motion carries. All right, now we're moving on to item 6H. This is update on rulemaking procedures from, for AAC R 7-2-615, an endorsement. This is update on rulemaking procedures from, for AAC R7-2-615, and endorsements. Deputy Director DePlante.
Thank you, President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board. This is certification endorsement rule that you opened last month. This is just the status update. Policy Director Rico Yanez held a public hearing on January 17th, and we're just still open for public comment while this is open. That's all.
So we, do we need to take any actions? No. Okay. Any questions for Deputy Director DePlante? Seeing there are none, okay, then we move on. Okay, now we're on to item 6I, and this is a presentation and discussion regarding legislative affairs. The board may take action to support, oppose, or remain neutral on specific legislative proposals. Well, now Deputy, or Policy Director Yanez.
Good afternoon, President Haley, members of the board. I feel like the kid and holding the class back at the, at the end of period. So I'll, I'll keep this legislative update brief, but session started on January 13th, and due to the emergent issue that the State Board that we had in regards to receivership, much of our activity right now is, legislative staff has been on communicating those issues to members. Moving forward, we are tracking about 150 bills right now of the 1,000 that have dropped. Deadlines for introductions are coming next week in the Senate, and then in the House the following week for bill introductions. So there's going to be a lot of bills that drop over the course of the next two weeks or so, and we will know how the, the shape of what the legislative session will look like a lot more in the next couple of weeks, and once we meet with our ledge team as well. The, and then just the last thing I wanted to leave you all with before I open up for questions, is just that the baseline revenue projections have been in excess of what was originally estimated. So even including Prop 123 backfill, I think that the cash revenues were estimated to be about $935 million for FY '26, which is much more than what we were, I think, originally set for as of last year.
A quick question for you, maybe jump into questions? Policy Director Yanez, question about Prop 123, do you have a, any idea of when the legislature will proceed with their appropriate procedure, so that we know when that ballot initiative will take place?
I'm actually unsure. There had been some discussions around it, although just due to the fact that it was, it has not been on our priorities in relation to K-12 funding, the board staff has not been as active. But the budget surplus right now does account for, in the baseline, covering Prop 123 funding, regardless of whether or not that distribution level ends up resetting at the beginning of the fiscal year for next year. So I think it reverts from 6.9 to 2.9. I could add, don't quote me on that one, but once that distribution level lowers back down in FY '26, if that is to happen, the budget does account for it, but I know that there still are some form of discussions going on right now.
Does anybody else have any questions for Policy Director Yanez? Thank you so much. You're going to be really busy.
Sure.
With that, we made it through Section 6. We're on to Section 7, or Item 7, which is a call to public. So Executive Director Ross. Oh, I should note, this is a time for the public to comment on items on today's consent portion of the enforcement action. So Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, we have no one for this call to the public.
We'll move on to Item 8. This is the consent agenda for enforcement actions, which we'll take, I hope, in a single motion. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda for enforcement actions that a board member would like to pull and discuss? Seeing that they're known, do I have a motion to approve Items 8A1 through 8A13, Item 8B1 through Item 8B4, Item 8C1 and 8C2, and 8D1 through 8D4?
So moved.
Dr. Hagerman is the first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Clay, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing that they're none, motion carries. Awesome. So moving on to Item 9. This is a call to the public, and this is, for Item 9, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items on the general session portion of the enforcement actions. All speakers will be limited to two minutes. Executive Director Ross, do we have any requests to speak?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, we have three requests. First will be Zachary Taylor, followed by Samantha Kaplinger, and then Flynn Carey.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Hello, state members of the board. I am on the list today as 10B7, I believe. In the interest, I fully appreciate the opportunity to speak. I wanted to just simply express a desire to potentially postpone the suspension of licensure until I complete my students' IEPs for the remainder of the school year and their services for the remainder of the school year. I understand that is a big ask, generally speaking, but the school I'm at, I'm the only teacher there, that is the specialized education teacher. I work with one para, I have a speech pathologist on my team as well, and the amount of time it would take to find somebody to replace me would be, would lean to a loss of service time for some of my kids who desperately need supports, the kids who are severely below reading level and writing level, who have been slowly showing growth, and a potential for documents to fall out of compliance as well. That is it. I appreciate the time and respectfully accept whatever your decision is. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, up next is Samantha Kaplinger, and then Flynn Carey.
Good morning. I am Samantha Kaplinger. I'm here on behalf of my client, James Jones, who is also online as a viewer. We are just here on Item 10, too. We don't have anything to add or to say, we were just present if the board were to have any questions from us when considering his negotiated settlement agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Samantha. Up next, we have Flynn Carey.
Good afternoon, Superintendent, members of the board. I'm here speaking on 10B5, which is Alexis Lopez. This is a matter set for a proposal by P-PAC of AREV. Just very briefly, as the board sees from its materials, this is a case where there were some concerns over boundaries and the certificate holder's judgment, including an outing involving them outside of the school setting. I want to note, the certificate holder didn't participate in the P-PAC hearing, so as is fairly standard, P-PAC did more of a summary process. However, even without the certificate holder's appearance, P-PAC still has a requirement to find facts that will support the violations. I'm speaking against the B-11 violation. I've reviewed the transcript from P-PAC, the police reports, and all the material that was enclosed, and I do not see that there is sufficient evidence that any kind of advance was made against any student by the certificate holder. The police investigation did not determine anything that could rise to the level of the B-11 violation. The students interviewed ran the gamut from having no knowledge of this, of that situation, to refusing to provide information, to refusing to provide names of those involved, to actively denying the conduct that P-PAC relied on that rose allegedly to the B-11. Even in her own interviews, the certificate holder denied those supposed advances. The board has the revocation recommendation, and there are still, even if you were to strike the B-11, other alleged violations available to the board, if it believed it still had a cause to revoke. The only thing that's sustaining the B-11 is potentially going to do is open the case up for an appeal to the Superior Court, so I would ask for consideration that the B-11 may not be appropriate, given the totality here. And obviously, to propose our rights to appeal, we have to take the position that any proposed action was incorrect, but I'm very specifically trying to focus the board on the B-11. Thank you.
Thinking, thank you. Executive Director Ross, are there any other requests?
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, that concludes this call to the public.
Okay, great. So we are now moving to Item 10. This is an opportunity, but we'll consider the general session for certification enforcement actions. Is there an item or items from the consent agenda that a board would like to pull and discuss? Seeing that they're none, do I have a motion to approve Items 10A1 and 10A2 and 10B1 through 10V8?
I move approval as presented.
Dr. Court made a motion. Do I have a second? Dr. Clay made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing that they're none, the ayes carry. Moving forward, we're now on to Item 11. Executive Director Ross.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, I do have a brief statement, but I believe Superintendent Horn, did you want to make a statement first?
Thank you. I've been asked to repeat the news I gave earlier, because my office alerted the media that if they can't come here, a member came here and did interview me, but if they can't come here, he told him to, to put, to get the video of this meeting through the website. So the news is that the federal government, we asked the federal government to give us back $9 million that Isaac School District did not spend and reverted. They agreed to send us, today we got the news, we got that we're getting $6 million back, which is very good news. It won't come in time to make tomorrow's payroll, but the legislature is meeting right now to try to come up with an emergency bill. As I understand it now, I don't really, I'm not up to date on it, but the idea was that they would instruct the county that if we send them, we can send the county money as an advance on state aid, that they will have to use that for, for the Met salaries. The county indicated that if we send them an advance on state aids, they will use it to pay back old debts, and they will not use it to pay salaries, which means that probably the school would, the whole district would collapse, and 5,000 students would not get the education to which they're entitled. So, but if the legislation orders them to do it, then they'll have to. If that, if that does pass on emergency basis, we will immediately send an advance on our state aid to the, to the county to pay payroll. In the long run, the situation is good, because they have a lot of property and buildings they can sell. So, so we just need to get through this emergency, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the legislature will pass that bill, and the governor will sign it today. Thanks.
President Haley, Superintendent Horn, members of the board, so just congratulations to President Haley, Vice President Hagerman. I wasn't here earlier to say, but thank you to Dr. Court for his service as president. Thanks to all of you for your service on the board. And then just a, a big thank you to, again, the, holding the very important and rapid hearing for receivership for Isaac School District a couple of Tuesdays ago. The board's quick action was, I believe, played a big role in moving this towards a, a good conclusion. The next board meeting is Monday, February 24th, and that, that'll do it.
Thanks, and many thanks to everyone. This meeting is adjourned at 1:07.
Thank you, guys. Take care.